Welcome to the 2020 Year-Old Issue. We'll go ahead and start with a roll call. Commissioner Clifford.
Present.
Commissioner Gordon.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Chair Niblin.
Here.
Vice Chair Cooper.
Here.
Commissioner Stedgen.
Here.
Commissioner Krasky.
Present.
All Commissioners are present. Thank you. I'll next ask Commissioner Gordon to lead us in our salute to the flag.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Gordon. So, next item on our agenda is the approval of order of agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the order of agenda? Commissioner Clifford.
I actually would like to ask for a shifting of the agenda. I would prefer to hear the Fassler project first, partly because I'm still recovering from pneumonia and I'm not certain I can stay the whole night.
Okay, that's the -- we've got a motion then to amend the order of agenda. Any discussion on that? Commissioner Gordon.
I'm fine seconding that.
Okay, got a motion to second then. Any comment from staff with respect to that motion? Okay, well, I've got a motion to second then. Want to go ahead and vote on that? Okay, well, on a unanimous vote, we've gone ahead and approved the order of agenda subject to amendment. We'll have Item 2 under Continued Public Hearings heard before Item 1, and that'll be the order of agenda. The next item is approval of our minutes of the meeting for January 16, 2018. Let's see, Commissioner Stedgen?
I have three corrections to the minutes. On packet page 6, Roger Masiyo is spelled M-A-S-C-I-O. On packet page 6, Jim Aleks is spelled Jim Alex A-L-E-X. On packet page 19, Javier Chavaria is spelled J-A-V-I-E-R-C-H-A-V-A-R-R-I-A. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cooper, did you have a comment with respect to the minutes?
No, I don't, thank you.
I don't know, was that -- Commissioner Krasky, had you pushed your button for that?
Nope.
Okay, excellent. So, we've got some corrections that I take at staff as noted. Commissioner Clifford, did you have a comment?
I'm willing to second with those corrections.
Excellent, so we've got a motion and a second. Go ahead and vote. Looks like it's approved on six votes. Commissioner Campbell, I guess abstaining. Thank you. So, the next item on the agenda is a designation of liaison to city council meeting, February 12, 2018. This is the San Pedro Terrace Six-Unit Subdivision. Could I get just any commentary from staff?
None, really. I mean, this is the same project that the Planning Commission recommended approval of the legislative actions. I will note that it was not -- the subdivision action that you took is final. It was not appealed or called up, so the city council will only be hearing the two legislative actions you made a recommendation on.
Thank you. So, do we have a volunteer to serve as the liaison to city council for that meeting of February 12? Not seeing anybody rushing to -- Commissioner Cooper.
I'll volunteer.
That's fantastic, thank you. Commissioner Cooper will be the liaison to the city council meeting. That'll take us then to oral communications. This is the portion of the agenda that's available to the public to address the Planning Commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Commission that is not on the agenda. The time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes. I do have a speaker card here for Mr. Ron Makel. If there's anybody else who's interested in addressing the Commission, please let us know, but we'll start with Mr. Makel.
Yeah, Ron Makel, good evening. Nice to see all the Commissioners here, all seven for a change, but that's another story. Congratulations, Dan Stednik, you know, good to see you up there. You're definitely a good choice for this Commission, so congratulations. I'm here to issue a little bit of a, kind of a complaint. Has to do with the, you know, remember the Harmony Project? I know there's several of you up there that were involved, like myself, on the Commission when the Harmony Project initially came before the Planning Commission for deliberation. Certainly has turned out to be a big fiasco, and I'm sure that I know, like myself, there's probably some of you probably would have voted differently had they known. But what I'm here to talk about is, I was up that area, and once in a while, I have to confess, I walk my dog up there, you know, they've got those streets in place and everything, but they're doing, always doing work, very piecemeal work up there. It's always a mess. They've got piles of dirt along Roberts Road, piles of asphalt and other debris and all this type of junk, and I can't help but think that the planning department has a best management practices, you know, element to it. So, I, and as you as Commissioner, I'm sure, I don't know if any of you drive by there, but if you see something like that, I think you might take the initiative to maybe make an issue about it. But it's a real eyesore right now, and it's terrible that I keep hearing stories that maybe two of the lots have been sold, and then I hear other stories, "Well, no, they're not, because now the guy wants $4 million." I had so many rumors about that property, but the shame is, is they ruin, the ridge line there, which is generally called Fassler Ridge, it was formerly one of our few remaining intact coastal prairie natural habitats, and it's ruined now. You've got piles of dirt up there on the ridge line and gravel and stuff. It's just a shame that this is what, this is what has resulted in that approved project, and it's just, I don't know, I just thought I'd bring it to your attention. Maybe the planning department, when they get to staff communication, she might be able to shed some light on what's going on up there, but it needs to get cleaned up, and even the neighbors across the street that live in those townhouses, they're not at all happy about it either, so, anyway, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Makel. I have a card for Suzanne McCall. Looks like Ms. McCall wanted to address the Commission during oral communication.
Actually, my name is Suzanne Moore, Pacifica.
My apologies, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'm concerned about Pacifica's displacement of residents priced out of rental and homeownership markets. I want to better understand Pacifica's inclusionary below-market requirement and its alternative fee waiver. I understand that building contractors are advised that 15% of proposed units be built below market rate, but they could possibly waive this requirement by instead requesting to pay a fee, which then goes to Pacifica's or the county's housing trust fund, and I'm curious to know how much is currently in that fund and how it's managed and protected. I don't know if that's something that can be answered at this meeting, or if it's something that can be. If Pacifica is currently in critical need of affordable below-market rate housing, and since money given to the housing trust fund could depreciate over time as construction costs rise, it seems ill-advised for Pacifica to accept fee waivers. The affordable units should be built consistent with our community's needs. So, how may Pacifica learn more about the trust fund and its management and better participate in ensuring protection and construction of much-needed below-market rate housing? Those are my questions this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. We'll go ahead and direct your questions to staff, and perhaps we'll hear more about it some other time. Thank you. I don't have any other speaker cards, I'm just going to confirm there's no one else who wants to address the Commission. Ma'am? And I'd ask you just state your name for the record.
My name is Deanna Stone.
Thank you.
So, I, my understanding is you guys still haven't made decisions regarding the marijuana clubs in the city, is that correct? Is that, as far as who's licensing, I know the zones have been dictated, and I know that there's some write-ups on stuff, but I currently live next to a club, and there's a lot of issues that the city currently is not addressing, and so I kind of wanted to bring up these issues and present them, not only for hopefully betterment of my community, but potentially other communities that may have these clubs near them. We have a lot of issues with parking. I have numerous photos here, if you'd like to see, these are just the best of, of people blocking drives, people parking in the middle of the streets, people not even bothering to attempt to properly park. We also have runway drivers constantly coming out of the lot for the club, speeding drivers speeding out of the club down the street. Questionable capabilities of driving with some of these people as well, particularly even when you call them out for, say, "Could you please move, you're in my driveway." I'm concerned that they're even pulling out of my driveway, because they probably shouldn't be driving. Noise from the cars, oftentimes they're blasting their radios, and then they'll leave their engines running and blast the radios, "Well, somebody's going to be just a minute." I can tell you how many times I've heard "just a minute." The business is treated as if it's a drive-by business. People just stop in and run it, somebody runs in and gets something while somebody idles a car, sits in the car, or even they just abandon the car, they run in and then they just leave. We had an incident with somebody peeing on our fence. We have incidents of people just dumping their garbage into the gutter. So, we're having a lot of issues just from this one club, and I know that you're looking at, there's potential other clubs, as well as what is the dealing with all this? The odor. We asked the owner, "Hey, we can, you know, I can't sit in my own apartment and not smell the club." So, what's the city doing is what I want to present to you guys, not only for my neighborhood, but for any other neighborhood that may be affected by this.
Thank you, ma'am. If you do, in fact, have photos that you want to share with staff, they'll become a part of the record for the hearing. Thank you. Well, again, I don't have any further speaker cards, I'll just again confirm there's no one else who wants to address the Commission during oral communications. Seeing nobody then, we'll go ahead and move on to our consent items, of which we have none. I'll just confirm that remains the case. And then we'll move on to our Continued Public Hearings pursuant to the change in the order of agenda. We're going to go to Item 2, which has, of course, become our first item now, and this is Development Plan DP 7514, rezoning RZ 19214, Specific Plan SP 14914, Transfer of Development Rights TDR 0314, Subdivision S-Sub 22414, Removal of Heritage Tree and Request for Payment of Fee in lieu of Providing Below Market Rate Housing Units for Construction of a 24-Unit Residential Condominium Project on a 53,627-square-foot portion of an 11-acre, 11.2-acre site at 801 Fassler Avenue. The APNs are 022-083-022 and 022-083-030. The Recommended Sequel Action on this project is Certification of a Supplemental to an Environmental Impact Report, including Adoption of a Mitigation Monitoring and Reporting Program, Findings of Fact and Statement of Overwriting Consideration, and the recommended action is to approve as conditioned. So, we'll go ahead then and receive the staff report on this matter.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Senior Planner Christian Murdock. The item before you is a Continued Public Hearing from the Planning Commission's meeting of November 6, 2017. I'd first like to provide a brief refresher about the proposed project. It is proposed on an 11.2-acre property at 801 Fassler, which is located approximately a half-mile east of Highway 1, west of Seacrest Condominiums, and north of Fassler Avenue and the Harmony at One Development. The property spans two land use designations in the city's general plan, Land Use Element. The eastern portion of the property is located in an area designated as Low Density Residential. A larger western portion of the property is located in an area designated as Open Space Residential. The low-density residential designation provides for residential development from three to nine units per acre in density. The open space residential designation provides for residential development of one unit per more than five acres. The entire property is zoned planned development with the Hillside Preservation District overlay. And you can see in this additional slide here, the approximate location of the development is right here, the low-density residential designation being on the eastern portion, the open space residential component being the remainder, and you can see roughly the elevation contours for the countywide 20-foot elevations. Shows you the western portion of the site is at a much lower elevation than the eastern The project is seeking a transfer of residential development rights, or TDR, which would allow development of the open space residential portion of the site at densities consistent with the low-density residential designation. In return, the applicant would deed-restrict all future residential development potential of the low-density residential area, so it could never develop in the future. In total, the applicant would transfer 32 units of development potential and combine it with one unit of development potential for the open space residential portion of the property, giving the area a maximum development potential of 33 dwelling units. The resulting development would include 24 units at a density of 2.1 units per acre. The project consists of 24 condominium units in 12 duplex buildings. The structures would be three levels, and building heights would range from approximately 31 feet to 44 feet. Each building has been designed using contemporary architecture, including flat and angular roof lines for visual accent and diversification. Building materials would consist of cement plaster, stucco, fiber cement siding, cultured stone, and metal awnings and rails. The slide before you shows one of the elevations of the site, showing the mix of materials, angles, vertical and horizontal relief, and so forth. During the November 6, 2017, public hearing, the Planning Commission requested further information on a number of topics. These items have been addressed in tonight's staff report, and I will summarize some of them here. The Planning Commission has requested further information on why the eastern portion of the property was designated low-density residential, while the western portion was designated open space residential. The quote provided on the slide here provides some insight on why the western portion was designated open space residential. The narrative in the general plan on page 44 reads, "Immediately west of the low-density residential area is a narrow vacant area with a limited amount of flatland. Potential traffic impacts on Fassler Avenue, potential geotechnical problems, and limitations of the Hillside Preservation District overlay zone indicate that open space residential is the most appropriate use of this area. However, consideration of actual conditions on the project site and the project description address the concerns of the general plan about the suitability of the site for development. Specifically, the proposed development would occur in the widest section of the north side of Fassler Avenue. It would include a single access point off of Fassler Avenue, and a restriping plan would address traffic impacts. Design measures and a detailed geotechnical analysis would address the geotechnical problems, and the project design would comply with the Hillside Preservation District standards, notably the maximum coverage based on the site's slope." At the last public hearing, the Planning Commission suggested the possibility that design details for Building A and Building A-Alt were interchangeable alternatives. The design details for Building A and Building A-Alt are the designs proposed for the cluster of four buildings that are referred to as Building A in the center of the site. Topographical considerations warrant the difference in the designs to allow for garage access in the units. Therefore, these designs are not interchangeable. And hopefully, the Commission can see that this is a section looking from south to north approximately, with the higher topography up here requiring a different floor plan and elevation to access the garage than the lower unit on the side. This being Building Type A, this being Building Type A-Alt. And so, for those reasons, the designs are not interchangeable. However, there is an option which would reduce the height of Building A. The Building A design is the tallest structure of the development at 44 feet 5 inches. The Planning Commission expressed interest in replacing Building A with the Building A-Alt design because of the reduced height of the ladder. The applicant provided a potential alternative for Building A, which lowers the height of the building by eliminating a sloping roof architectural feature of Building A. Eliminating the sloping roof from Building A would reduce the height to 40 feet 5 inches, a reduction of 4 feet. Building A would remain the tallest structure of the entire development, however, and because of architectural design and aesthetic considerations, staff is not recommending the elimination of the sloped roof. Its removal would result in a less interesting building design, and it would appear too boxy. The reduced height also would not eliminate any significant environmental impacts from the project. In addition, it would render the Building A design inconsistent with all other buildings on the site, which contain the slope-proof element. However, should the Planning Commission find the removal desirable, staff has provided a potential condition of approval for consideration on packet page 154. The Planning Commission requested information to better understand why the proposed project requires more fill than the previously approved Prospects project. The Prospects had an underground parking garage, which resulted in large quantities of cut to the site. This garage would have generated close to 10,000 cubic yards of material, which could have been used for fill by the Prospects project. The proposed project does not include an underground parking garage, and therefore would not generate the same amount of cut for fill. Therefore, the fill must be imported to the site. The Planning Commission had questions about who would be able to use the proposed onsite trails. Since the last meeting, the applicant has revised its project to include a greater onsite trail network, which would connect a proposed development located on the western edge of the property to the eastern lot line near Seacrest Condominiums. The applicant has also expanded the trail network around the immediate development area to provide an additional trail connection for residents on the east side of the development. Previously, the only trail connection was on the west side of the development. You can see here the long west-to-east connection, which will link up near the Seacrest Condominium development, and, well, not a great scale, this is the new trail connection to a viewing area and rest area here that goes up through the eastern buildings. This was not present previously, and additional connections throughout this area on the west, and an additional viewing area near the stormwater retention areas has been added as well. The applicant has also revised its project to include a voluntary deed restriction on all non-developed land. The applicant would already be required to deed-restrict the entire low-density residential portion of the site if the transfer of development rights request is approved. However, the applicant opted to restrict future development of the balance of the site outside of the development footprint for the project. The terms of the voluntary deed restriction would allow only limited types of development, which include trails and wildlife-safe fences and seating areas as the only vertical construction. The Commission will note the area with this vertical striping is the low-density residential designated portion of the site. If the Planning Commission approves the transfer of development rights, this area would be restricted from all future housing development. It would lose all of its development potential, which would transfer to the western portion, the open space residential portion of the site. However, this outline, rather, the stricter outline here around the buildings themselves would constitute the developable portion of the site, and all of these other remaining areas, which would have development potential, would be voluntarily deed-restricted from future development by the applicant. Next, Bob Grandi of Fair &amp; Pierce and Jeff Riley of WRA will provide some additional information about the Commission's questions regarding the transportation impacts and the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, alternative analysis, both of which were of interest during the November 6, 2017, public hearing.
So, I'll cover three items tonight. The first is a little bit of an overview of what's in the EIR, the Traffic Assessment in the EIR, and then some new traffic data we collected subsequent to our last Commission hearing, and a modified striping plan for Fassler Avenue. So, this slide summarizes the information that was presented in the EIR previously. The project would generate approximately 27 trips during the morning and 29 trips during the evening peak hour. That's during the single highest hour in the morning and evening commute period. In the environmental document, we also looked at, did a CCAG review, that's the Regional Congestion Management Agency requires that we do that. Any project with more than 100 peak hour trips has to go through a separate study. This did not meet that threshold, so did not do a separate CCAG evaluation. Did it, though, do an intersection level of service assessment based on the city's significance criteria, and the project did not have a significant traffic impact from a level-of-service standpoint? We did assess construction traffic, as you see, the 26 trucks a day is what's identified in the environmental document, and we also identified some impacts with respect to site distance at the driveway and onsite pedestrian access that are being addressed through the modified project. So, those are all covered in the, in the EIR. In terms of new traffic data, subsequent to our last Planning Commission hearing, we collected information on November 28. That data was collected on Fassler right immediately at the project frontage, approximately where the driveway would be located. There were 13,400 vehicles per day on that day. That's the sum of traffic going downhill and uphill. The peak hour for traffic in terms of the single highest direction was 7:00 to 8:00 a.m. in the morning on the date that we collected the data. That was the westbound or downhill direction, about 1,040 vehicles in that direction heading downhill. We also collected speed data, which was actually the specific, I think, request of the Commission or interest of the Commission to have some speed data, so we did collect that as part of this information. It's all the same data collection effort. The 85th percentile speed is 49 miles an hour, and 82% of the vehicles are in the range of 35 to 49 miles an hour. The 85th percentile is significant because that's the metric that is used to set speed limits on roadways. When you collect data, you develop the 85th percentile, and that is then used as part of that process. In addition, we looked at westbound queues on Fassler in the morning from State Route 1, and the maximum queue that we measured of traffic that backed up essentially from State Route 1 was at 7:40 in the morning. This figure's maybe a little hard to see, but the red line on the figure shows that that distance back, which is approximately just west of Robert, the intersection of Robert Road, so that's the queue data that we were able to collect on that date. We focused on that 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. morning window. So, the last few slides I have are the revised restriping plan, and this exhibit, I have a subsequent exhibit that's blown a little bit up more at the, at the actual driveway, which you see on the lower strip, but westbound Fassler would have a, and maybe I'll flip to that, and we'll, this shows a comparison of the new plan right at the project driveway, as well as down below the prior plan. The prior plan had three lanes, a wider downhill and a wider uphill, single lane in each direction, and a left turn pocket into the site, as well an acceleration lane on the uphill for the uphill direction for vehicles turning left out of the site. The modified plan retains that left turn into the site in the acceleration lane and the single uphill lane, but tightens that section and creates a separate westbound or downhill right turn lane into the project, and then that allows for an acceleration lane if you're exiting the project to exit in a sheltered way, making the right turn out of the project and going downhill or westbound onto Fassler. Maybe I'll pause there and see if there are any questions about that.
Commissioner Clifford.
Well, first, I want to thank you for putting the extra work in on the money structure that happens right at the projects. I like the new plan, striping plan. I have, I understand the limitations in terms of doing this query studies, but with only one day's worth of data, that's, that really doesn't give us a... It gives us a real snapshot rather than an idea of what happens over time. The other problem that I have with the query study is that it happened on November 28, which is right in the middle of a holiday period. It's Thanksgiving, and a lot of people aren't traveling on the 28th. I know both my wife and, did not look for it during that time period. So, there were at least two cars, I know, that weren't in that query. So, I do appreciate the work we've done, but I have to raise the issue with, it only been about one day's study, and I do understand what went on, so. The question is, is, I guess it's not, it isn't a question, I just wanted to make sure I got that out there.
Okay, thank you.
I do appreciate the question. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Clifford. Commissioner Cooper.
Thank you, Chair. Just looking at your drawing, it's a little bit hard to read, obviously, because it's overlaid on a photo, but it doesn't, does it increase the curb sizes at all as far as on Fassler Avenue? Are we, are you increasing the road sizes all from curb to curb?
No. No, we're retaining the current curb-to-curb dimension. This is just a restrip. What it would end up doing in order to create that buffer, if you will, the downhill buffer lane, is the restrip will go further, a little bit further up the hill, a little bit further down the hill, in order to, you have to, so uphill traffic would be shifted. Right now, it has that two-to-one lane drop, very close to where the project access is. That would have to occur a little bit further downhill, but essentially, it just means a little bit more striping in either direction that needs to be done in order to create this. But it's no change in the curb-to-curb.
No change in the curb. Is there any median as far as for bikes on the side anymore? I know, like, a lot of times, we stripe, and then there's usually a three-foot median or a two-foot median prior to the curb. Is that going away? Is that what happens here? Is that what happens here?
Sorry, like, a bike lane?
Well, it's not, okay, I know I want to surprise you, but typically, on a road, you have a stripe, and then you have probably a space, a two- or three-foot space before you hit the curb. Is that space now gone, so where your traffic is actually right up against the curb? Or is there still a safe distance between where that white line would appear and where that curb would appear?
So you're going to be, you're going to have, like, a standard 12-foot lane, and it is going to be right adjacent to the curb, once you make that transition, or once you go from the two-to-one lane uphill, you will have, that single lane will be against the curb. So right now, you have a wider lane.
Correct.
It's just going to narrow down from about 18 to about 12 feet, which is a standard travel lane on, say, Route 1 that you would have, but it's narrower than what's there now if you're going uphill.
So if there was a bike in that lane, what would happen? Would he have to wait?
Well, the motorstool lane would need to go around the bicycle, if the bicycle's traveling uphill, because the motor needed to slow, wait until there's a gap, and then pull around.
And then go around him.
Yeah.
And did you, you worked with the city engineer on this section?
Yes, and Ray is.
Okay. I'll have, I have a touchscreen for Ray when he gets done, but thank you, that's my questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Stegenk.
This is my first comment on this APN. I'll disclose that I had discussions on this project with Noel Blinko as an individual. I'm going to stand up and point to what I'm talking about here. I think you said that you were getting morning peak traffic of 1,400 vehicles per hour and the 2,000s?
About 1,000 downhill.
1,000, great. And the 2007 report showed a backup at the Fassler Highway 1 intersection of more than 1,000 vehicles. I'm just going to point right here, and you can tell me what this is.
So that is a, essentially, a triangular, it could be either striped or a raised median that would essentially direct traffic coming down the hill to make a right turn. So it's essentially, we've created a forced, a right turn pocket into the project and shifted the through traffic into the second lane, the lane next to that.
So you're kind of sheltering the acceleration lane there?
Exactly. So you're providing for a deceleration lane for downhill traffic making a right into the project, and then traffic making a right out will have its own lane to accelerate downhill, and the through traffic that is, would be in the second lane over, if you will. Right now, and then, once you get below the project, you have two lanes, as you do today.
I'll just point out for the public that the higher elevation is on the right side there, and the lower elevation is on the left side there. Did you break down that 1,000 vehicles per hour going uphill or downhill?
That was downhill in the morning. That's the hardest one.
So you were suddenly putting 1,000 vehicles per hour in one lane instead of two there?
They're in a single lane above the project currently, and then it widens out to two lanes. So that single lane that they're currently in, above the project site, will continue downhill, so they'll still be in that single lane. Once they get below the project, they'll have the added project trips in the other lane, and they'll be able to redistribute in the two lanes, once you've gotten downhill or below the...
Are you certain there's a single lane in front of that project right now? I've been there today.
Above the project.
Oh, but at that project right now, there's two lanes downhill, correct?
The project is basically the break where it goes from one downhill lane to two.
Okay, thank you very much.
Commissioner Campbell.
For the traffic data analysis, November 28, how did you pick that date?
It was, we wanted to, ideally, we would not do counts between Thanksgiving and Christmas, and we would wait until January. We wanted to get some information. We had a good weather window. This was actually, Thanksgiving occurred on, earlier than it traditionally does this year, so we had a, the last week of the month of November was actually after Thanksgiving week. We collected the, we did actually compare it to our historic data. The volumes were actually slightly higher than some of the data collected two and five years ago. So it wasn't actually below any of our prior counts.
I got to ask, when were the, what days were the prior counts done?
I just... I would have to look. They were in 2015, I think, would have been the prior counts for the EIR. I can get the exact date. I don't have those memorized, but I know we would not have done it between Thanksgiving and Christmas, because we wanted to look at speeds, and that was the primary issue, was looking at the speed data. We decided we would collect the data as quickly as we could, because we didn't know if we'd have weather. You know, once you get into January, you have weather issues about the ability to collect data, and so it can get extended. You can end up getting extended in terms of when you can actually get good data, and we had a good weather week, so we decided to go ahead and collect the data.
Let me ask about that. How does the weather impact the ability to take the traffic counts?
We generally avoid taking traffic counts on a day where we've got bad weather.
Because?
Usually, we don't, we won't do that. It's just, it's difficult to actually, the mechanics of collecting the information gets a lot more challenging. So whether we do it with an individual out in the field, or whether you do it with video cameras, it gets challenging. So we usually just don't count on bad weather days.
I'm thinking, worst-case, traffic analysis is kind of important.
Yeah. Yeah, well, we were trying to supplement the information that was already in the EIR that we collected during the regular travel season with speed data. When we collect the speed data, we automatically get the volume data as well, so I wanted to present that information, just so you'd have the latest volume data that we're able to collect. But everything in the EIR was based on counts that we did in 2015, and I'll get that date for you.
And that'll be interesting. I was, obviously, when school's in session, Fassler backs up, way up, and there's a significant traffic issue associated with Fassler. It was one of the issues I had with the traffic analysis that was done for the Quarry Project. They also took the traffic analysis on an off day, which I found curious. So, yeah, that's kind of a concern.
So the, that would have been early June 2015, so it would have been June 2, 2015, while we collected the previous counts for the EIR. Thank you.
Commissioner Gordon.
Thanks. Most of my questions have been answered, but a question following up on Commissioner Campbell's question about November 28. Was Terranova, was that high school, and do we know if the high school was in session that day, that week after Thanksgiving? I don't even know. Because that would have been a, that would have dramatically affected probably the data collection.
We checked on the schools, and we were informed all the schools were in session that day.
Were open?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Cooper, did you have another?
Yeah, one more question. Thank you, Chair. Did you ever explore putting a deceleration and an acceleration lane onto your property, rather than into the right-of-way? I've seen the turnouts, where you go into a development, and they provide that lane on their property, and then vice versa, when you're pulling out, making a new road and putting it on.
Chair, if I could clarify, Mr. Grandy is a consultant to the city. He's not affiliated with the developer.
Okay. Was that ever explored?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Looks like that's all the questions that we have at this point. Thank you.
I'm going to continue the presentation. My name is Jeff Riley. I'm a senior environmental planner with WRA. We were hired to prepare the supplemental environmental impact report for the proposed project. You may recall my presentation previously in the public hearing, the previous public hearing, and there were several questions about the EIR alternatives. So that's what I'm going to be focusing on right now. And just as a reminder, the EIR's alternatives analysis is intended to avoid or substantially reduce any of the significant environmental impacts of the project, while still meeting the basic objectives of the project. And, actually, some next slide here. So this table, you may not all be able to read it. I've got a couple other slides that follow this that are a little bit more close up. But the alternatives analysis is also supposed to, it compares and contrasts the significant environmental impacts of the project with each alternative, as this table does. And so as you can see on the left-hand side of this slide, four alternatives reanalyze, and including what's called the no-project alternative, and that's required by the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, you must look at a no-project alternative. And that involves no development, existing conditions remain, and therefore, well, I'll get into more of the details of the conclusions of that. The second alternative, excuse me, is redistribution of units. That was briefly discussed earlier by Mr. Murdock. The third, alternative C, is reduced density. And lastly, alternative D is reduced height alternative. Again, I have a few more slides in detail, but in general, the first alternative, no project, alternative A, would not meet any of the project objectives, because no homes would be built, and obviously, that's one of the main objectives of the applicant. However, it would eliminate all of the project's significant unavoidable environmental impacts, namely aesthetics, scenic vistas particularly, visual resources, and scenic highways are the three main categories in aesthetics that were found to be significant unavoidable for the project. When we get into alternative B, and so you see each of these columns address objectives, as well as the impacts, as well as the description, and alternative B, the redistribution of units, as was discussed earlier by Mr. Murdock, one unit in the open-space residential portion of the site on the western side, and 23 units on the low-density residential portion on the upper parcel, eastern parcel. This alternative would meet most of the project objectives, and it would eliminate the project's significant and unavoidable impacts related to scenic vistas. That's the one and only impact that it eliminates. Alternative C is a reduced-density alternative. It reduces the project by 50%. The project's proposed at 24 units. Therefore, what we focused on were the 12 westernmost units that really have the most impact on the scenic vista of the Pacific Ocean and the Marin County headlands and And this alternative would meet most of the project objectives, and we can get into those if you need, if you'd like. And it would eliminate all of the project's significant unavoidable impacts related to aesthetics, and I just listed those three, scenic vistas, highways, and visual character. Lastly, alternative D is the reduced-height alternative. And, you know, this comment came up in one of the, when we circulated the NOSA preparation to prepare a draft environmental impact report, and a comment letters requested that we explore alternatives that look at heights that are consistent with the city's standards. And so that's why we had that alternative, like the old DIR as well, and it would meet most of the project objectives, but unfortunately, it does not, it reduces aesthetic impacts, but it does not eliminate those three aesthetic impacts that I mentioned earlier, to a less-than-significant level, is the way we call it in SEQA. So now I'm going to get back just quickly, so the way that these slides were ordered, or, excuse me, the alternatives presented in the staff report are in this order, and so I thought it would help to just start beforehand, go A through D. There's a few redundancies, but I'll be brief, if I may. Again, this alternative, reduced density, was chosen as the environmentally superior alternative, because it reduces most of the significant environmental impacts of the project, as well as what we found to be less-than-significant impacts. Fewer homes, fewer traffic, or less traffic, less noise pollution, let, operational noise pollution for traffic, and so forth. Has a significant ripple effect in that regard. And it would have a, excuse me, it assumes that the same amount of development area as the proposed project, but only buildings A and C would be built. It mentioned it's the environmentally superior, and it would have a similar, it won't reduce the significant unavoidable noise impact, and it would generally result in a similar construction noise impact than the proposed project. This alternative is not being recommended by staff for approval, because it does not result in a well-balanced, well-designed project compared to the amount of development area created. And then, if I may, just getting close to wrapping up, the alternative B is, again, it's consistent with the general plan, zoning designations and general plan, land use designations, excuse me. Hence, there would be no transfer of development rights under this alternative. And so I've said before, 23 units on the upper half, or a portion, and one on the lower. It, again, reduces the significant impacts to scenic vistas, but it's not being recommended by staff for approval because of the significant grading of the hilltop or ridgeline that would be required to accommodate the units, circulation, parking, and so forth, and hence still has a significant unavoidable impact to visual character and visual resources as viewed from a scenic highway. And I should also add that because the homes are closer to existing homes on Fassler Avenue to the east above the site, the construction noise impacts would be greater as well, which were deemed to be significant and unavoidable for the project. And then, this slide was shown earlier, excuse me, okay, got moved, but so I had, I was just going to reiterate the slide that showed the green and the blue, and the contrast of the elevation between the upper and lower portions of the site, and that they're roughly, depending where you are in those portions of the site, about 100 to 120 feet higher for the low-density residential portion. And so some of the resultant impacts would be, is that by placing taller structures up higher on that eastern portion, the views from downslope viewing locations, such as Rockaway Beach area or Highway 1, would, the buildings would look taller than, than as viewed from closer up, if you will. And then, lastly, these alternatives were not chosen to, either as environmentally superior, nor approval, recommended for approval by the staff, for various reasons, particularly for no project that does not meet the objectives. And for the reduced height, again, it's, it complies with the city code, but it doesn't avoid this, any of the significant unavoidable impacts of the project. So that's how we came to the conclusion on the environmentally superior alternative, and I'm happy to help answer any questions you may have. I'm going to turn it back to Mr. Murdock.
Commissioner Clifford.
On your reduced-height alternative, does bringing it down to 35 feet reduce the number of units that would be able to be built?
It's a good question. In, not in this analysis, no. It had the same density, and so while visual impacts were fewer or less under this alternative, all the other impacts were pretty much the same as the project, because it has the same density. Same traffic, air quality, operational air quality, noise, population housing, demands for public utilities, and so forth.
Okay. And another part of my question is, the reduced density, reducing it by 50%, is that even buildable?
That's a good question. You know, we feel this is a reasonable range of alternatives, and whenever we address alternatives to avoid significant impacts, you're typically always reducing the size of the project, and maybe the footprint or the density. But if a statement to be made that is financially infeasible would be to be made, that actually needs to be proven financially, in the books, if you will, so.
Commissioner Cooper.
Thank you, Chair. I think Mr. Clifford had a good point, as far as reducing it to 35 feet from the 45 feet that it's proposed at. At what height did you find that it was a big impact? I mean, if they were to increase it to 55 feet, is that, like, throw it way out of the ballpark? I mean, where's your, where's the...
That's a good question. And, you know, quite honestly, we didn't get into that level of detail, and this may not satisfy you, but SEQA does not require that alternatives be analyzed in the same level of detail as the project.
Correct.
You can do that. I'm not saying you can't, but if you did that for aesthetics, you might be caused to maybe do it for all the other environmental topics, and then you're getting in almost four EIRs and one EIR, is one, I think, the reason why the SEQA guidelines read that way. But it's really the location of the homes, and that lower area was identified as, you know, well, excuse me, Foster Avenue, as a candidate for a scenic roadway. And as you can see from the simulations in the report, it does provide quite an expansive view of the ocean and Marin County.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I needed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob and Jeff. So to conclude, staff recommends adopting the attached resolution to certify the SEQA document and adopt the associated findings of fact and mitigation measures, to approve a subdivision and development permits as conditioned for 24 townhome units, to recommend city council approval of a rezoning of the property with a development plan, and to deny the applicant's request for payment of an in-lug fee rather than construct below-market-rate housing units on site. Staff is available and happy to answer any of the commission's questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. Are there any questions for Mr. Murdock before we open the public hearing? Commissioner Clifford.
I actually have a question for engineering, or a couple of questions for engineering.
Okay, it looks like we have somebody appropriate to fill those questions headed to the mic. to the mic.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Raymond Donguena, Senior Civil Engineer.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Clifford.
Yes, I noticed that in the staff report that we now have, you now have a piece worked out, a way of generating a fee for the trips of the dump trucks. Could you explain that to us so that we understand how that would work?
Certainly. So I calculated the lane length from Highway One to approximately the project entrance, and then calculated it to, for a pavement overlay, two-inch grind and AC overlay. That estimated to about approximately $110,000. And then we figured out the project truck, truck traffic, and converted that to passenger vehicle counts. And then we divi, we ratioed that with the total vehicle numbers for the average pavement life of 10 years. So we got a travel for the truck ratio, number of truck travel versus total vehicle, and then you get a ratio multiplied by the cost, you get the total for this project.
Okay, good. That was only one eastbound lane?
That is correct, one eastbound lane. For, for the truck that's fully, that's loaded with the fill material.
Okay, so what about the truck that's going westbound? It's not exactly like it.
Correct, yes. We, we did, I did do a calculation for that, but we felt that it's part of a normal, maybe, traffic for that, and we, this is an unusual project in which there is a lot of fill for the project. Normally, projects would try to balance the cut and fill, so we figure that just the eastbound lane would, would have the significant impact.
I'm going to make a comment here. I did do some research on this on Google, and I came up with a loaded dump truck with 10 yards of material in it would weigh approximately 73,000 pounds. And the average passenger car would weigh, and the average is taking, going from compact all the way up to unescalate, would be, average of that would be 4,000 pounds. So my, based on my figures, the loaded dump truck would be 18 and a quarter times the weight of a passenger car, but that weight would be focused in a very tiny area in comparison to, what, 18 and a half, 18 and a quarter passenger cars would fill. So the weight is focused more, so I'm, I'm having a problem with this very linear fee structure you had set up. One, that it does not count the weight of the empty truck going downhill, which is eight and a quarter times the standard passenger car. So again, there's a large amount of weight focused on the road and, and road surfaces as opposed to the difference that would be entailed with 18 passenger cars going over the same area. It's just, this, this seems to me logically that there would be more impact from the greater weight of a smaller area. So I, you know, I, one, I'm not happy that we're not counting the downhill. I think what we're getting here is, is we're using that information in and we're going to get that information out in terms of the sheer of any potential damage to the road from the dump trucks versus passenger cars. So I'm, I'm not happy with the way it's, with the way it's worked out, and my guess is, is that the fee that would be generated out of this based on the way you're doing it would probably be somewhere in the neighborhood of $150 to $200. And that doesn't, that doesn't reflect what it's going to take to fix that road based on focusing that of 70, 70,000 pounds.
I understand your concern that, yes, the, the limited, the focus of the three-month project might have a little bit more impact than the, the stream or, or the natural flow of the passenger vehicles over the, the road.
Thank you. I, I do appreciate you explaining everything to us. I may be, is there another question? Is there another way in terms of, say, taking pictures of the road just before they start and then pictures of the road after and seeing what the actual damage is rather than trying to work this out as, as some kind of a ratio?
We could do that, however, there are still truck traffics and vehicle traffic that's going to be using the road, and with the photo, we won't really know who caused that what damage, so it still would be a guesswork. But we could document before and after to make sure that a specific truck traffic did not cause a certain damage.
Okay, thank you very much, and I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Steging, did you have a question?
Yeah, I had a question for Ray there. Do you have an estimate of the total fees, total revenue these fees will generate?
We calculated it out, and for, for the one eastbound lane, it came out to approximately
For the entire project?
Correct. That's their portion ratioed out to 10 years with the normal vehicle traffic for that lane.
And that's $134.
Correct, sir.
Okay. I also have a question, I believe, for staff. I see the in-loof of market-rate housing request is still there. Do we have a number of what the applicant is, is looking to pay for those, or did staff make, I know they didn't recommend it, but was there any discussion of price there?
No, we never went that far.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cooper.
I have a question for Ray. Ray, I have a question for you on the, the traffic lanes in the study. Did you, you looked at their proposed plan here?
I was the one who do that.
Okay. I guess I'm a little concerned in, if I was to flip this project on the other side to Harmony One, it seems like we disregarded what Harmony One wants to do as far as their inflow, deceleration, acceleration lanes.
Correct, yeah. There was no, I, when I drafted that, I did not take into account the Harmony One entrance and exit. I just want, I, my main goal was to see if this four-lane layout will fit.
Yeah, I, I understand.
So it would still, it would still have to be evaluated, you know, peer review to make sure that all the safety, you know, meets with safety, and then layout, you know, alignment.
Yeah, just for record, when I look at it, it's, we flipped the access to this project for the access to Harmony at One, was what it looks like to me. There's no deceleration or acceleration lanes afforded to Harmony at One, so we can make this project work. And I understand what you tried to do here, and I appreciate your work, I just want to make that as a note.
Yes.
Commissioner Steging, did you have another question or comment?
Yeah, I had a question, one more question for Ray. I'm not sure if you heard Commissioner Cooper's question on the acceleration lane housed on the actual APN. Would that offer substantial benefits in, in terms of throughput?
If the acceleration and deceleration lane were constructed on the property, that would widen all the other lanes within Fassler Avenue. So it would be a little, it would have a face, safety factor, basically, on, on increasing those lanes and possibly fitting in a buffer or like a shoulder to, to the, to the, the eastbound lane.
Thank you. Thank you, I think that's it for the moment. Okay. Okay, so we'll go ahead, excuse me, and open the public hearing, and of course, we'll start with the applicant and afford the applicant the opportunity to address the matters that have been raised thus far this evening or any other matters related to the project. If there's a representative of the applicant here.
Good evening, Jeff Potts, SDG Architects. Really, we are just here to answer questions that you all may have tonight, but we did want to clarify one point that was just brought up, and that is that we did submit actual construction of BMRs as our package this time, and a site plan was provided with what we submitted to staff that actually showed the locations of those BMRs. So the comment that we were still requesting an in-loof fee was not accurate at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Wanted to clarify that.
If there's nothing else, I think perhaps what we'll do is maybe defer any comments or questions for the applicant until after applicant has the opportunity to address any issues raised by the public comment that, that may be forthcoming, if that's okay with everyone else.
Thank you.
Would that be all right, or do you?
Well, I did have one question.
Well, go ahead.
I've been reading the staff report. It appeared that there was a change in the line of sight calculations, not calculations, in what was to be done for the line of sight. Originally, we were hearing that the tree was going to be taken down. It was an end floor, kind of the tree taken down, or the tree taken down and the hill sculpture. What I read in the staff report was that both are going to now happen, the tree come down and some sculpture in on that hillside. Is that still part of your plan now?
I'll have to defer that to the civil engineer.
Thank you.
It looks like nothing else at this point. Is the civil engineer here to speak to that, or?
Yes.
Okay. Well, maybe what we'll do is just go ahead and hold that until we've heard from the public. I'm going to go ahead and move to the speaker cards I have. I've got Ron Machel, followed by Rebecca Vogel.
Machel, that's okay, I won't tell anybody. Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I didn't kind of get, get on the bandwagon on, on this project earlier. I've known about it, I guess having been on the planning commission when this thing came before us then, and of course, as some of you know, it was a very pretentious project, to say the least. There's a lot of things about it that were sellable elements that we don't see today. But, you know, there are things about the project I think are nice. I like the trail that you, that they have in the back going, connect up there to the, to the sidewalk up by the, by the condos up there, because I think that having some kind of pedestrian access for, for the youth, if they want to walk to school, be it Terranova or the school down below, I guess that's, I forget what the name of that small, other school below there is, but I think that's a great factor. Yeah, I'm, I'm not really sure on, on, you know, the location of it, is the best in the flat area or up above, you know, I'm kind of mixed feelings on that. I mean, if you build it up to the east, right next to the, to the condos up there, then you can just have a wall of development all the way, or, now, if you have it down in the western portion, you know, it'd be, it seems to me it's going to be lower and maybe you'll have a nice open space gap in between those two developments, it's something to consider. But traffic, that's up to you. I couldn't tell you about traffic. I do know that from studies in the past, the level of service there is pretty bad in the morning especially, so Monday through Friday, and I'm sure you're aware of that. Other things that I would like to see, if, I don't know where you're going on this, but I think the height, I'd like to see you guys maintain the city's height limit on these buildings, and don't exceed the height limit. I'd like to really look at some color, you know, Pacifica has basically two seasons. It's called brown and green, you know, so, and of course, on top of that, we have gray. But anyway, I like to see you guys, I like to see if something's going to be built of the colors that are going to be harmonious or they won't be so visible if they're going to be visible, or you can mitigate that visibility. Another thing, landscaping, native plants, you know, sea anothus right now, some of you may be familiar with that plant, the sea anothus thyrsephloris, it's got these beautiful blue flowers. It's in blossom right now. It's a winter bloomer and supports a lot of insects, especially bumblebees and other insects, but, and they are, grow on the hillsides adjacent there, cattle hill and whatnot. So landscaping, native plants, you know, native scrub, you know, coffeeberry, coyote bush, sea anothus, toion trees, it's a small native tree. I like to see that happen there, and that is a green belt between Fassler and Rockway, so I like to keep, keep that native, natural as much as possible, but that's about, I think, I think that's pretty much all I had to say. So, but any rate, yeah, good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Machel. Rebecca Vogel, followed by Patrick, I'm sorry, can't, Patrick Cobent.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Vogel, and I've lived in the Seacrest condo complex for 14 years. I'm here today to, or this evening to speak on behalf of the requests to transfer the development rights to the west parcel from the east parcel. And my reasons, I outlined in a, in a letter that I sent to the commissioners on November 19th. So I won't go through all of them, but I will just say briefly, much of what we've been hearing tonight, that the west parcel would be less intrusive to the Seacrest neighbors. It would also, I think greatly preserve the, the scenic vistas on the Fassler Avenue Drive. It would be less problematic, I understand, for, with respect to preserving the native vegetation. And I strongly agree that having the ability to develop hiking trails on the east parcel that can be shared by all Pacificans would be really a great asset to the community. And in addition, we've talked about traffic, but one thing that we haven't talked about is the difference in the line of sight from the two parcels. So as you are looking to either enter Fassler from the two parcels or to, to enter the proposed complex from the two locations, I think the visibility is much better at the west parcel, and therefore, I feel that that would mitigate some of the concerns with the excessive speed that happens on Fassler Avenue and the potential for traffic incidents there. So those are my primary reasons, and thank you for listening to me. And again, I just respectfully request that you would approve the transfer of the development rights.
Thank you, Ms. Vogel. Again, Patrick Coben, Cobens, followed by Joanne Arnos.
Sorry, I have terrible handwriting. It's Patrick Coberness.
Thank you.
So I, I'm a resident at Seacrest, 903 Fassler Avenue. I did send a letter to you guys November 15th, 2017, and discuss the different reasons that I thought that it would be much better to build the development on the west parcel. The east parcel is steep, it's a hilltop, and developing on the west parcel makes a lot more sense for a variety of reasons, as Rebecca outlined. Safety issues of people coming down Fassler, there's kind of a corner there as you first come around past Seacrest, and having a driveway right there on the east parcel, I think would be dangerous. There's a much better line of sight if they build on the west parcel. There's also the issue of, it just seems like a nicer habitat on the east parcel. It's less disturbed. The west parcel is a former quarry, quarried area. And also, as a Seacrest resident, we're very isolated up there. We don't have sidewalks. People have to literally run across the street if they want to go, try to hike on the Harmony at One parcel, and as you know, people drive 50 miles an hour often on Fassler Avenue. It's dangerous, especially for older people and kids. So it's, it's just a really nice opportunity for us if we could have a hiking trail, and I think a joint-use hiking trail between the, the new development- think a joint-use hiking trail between the new development and us would be a really beneficial use.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Coberness.
I have one question. Is there going to be, as you go uphill, is there going to be a left turn lane into the new development?
We'll go ahead and hold that question. We'll make sure that, we'll ask the applicant to address that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Ms. Arnos, followed by Noel Blinko.
Good evening, Joanne Arnos on Oddstead Boulevard. I was here with you before about the issues, major issues with this project in terms of the environmental impact report and vistas that this will disturb, let alone all the native plants and wildlife that's there, wildlife that's below the ground, wildlife that's on the ground, wildlife that's in the air. And in terms of the things that have come up tonight, height, and I know height's an issue, the colors and pointiness of the roofs. If you go to the Arizona and the southwest, all buildings are built into the hillside, as Mr. Mochel said, in a color and non-sharp objects, so that it sort of blends. So when you're riding by or you're looking, you don't see this orange, sharp-roofed development. The issue of traffic, I'm, as I told you, I live in Oddstead, and I'm down Fassler all the time. There was a recent report on the Department of Transportation and Safety that the most severe accidents in the country right now are left-hand turns crossing traffic. And so this is going to be a major issue for people coming up Fassler to try to get into the development, let alone the speed going down. Fassler is always an issue, and I just can't see how all these trucks, all this damage to the environment, going to mix with schools and traffic and just the general safety and the destruction really of this precious environment that we have here. And I said this to you before, that if this project is approved, it's not going to go away. We're going to see it every day. And I really think you have a responsibility to our generation and multiple generations to come to hold these hillsides in a precious way that Mother Earth gave it to us, and we shouldn't take it away too careful, too.
Thank you, Ms. Arnos. Noel Blinko, followed by Sherry Rosenberg.
Good evening, Planning Commission, Noel Blinko. I live up on Edgemore Avenue, and I really am concerned with this project because many of us over the years worked hard and spent many hours trying to preserve our open space on the hillside. And we do have zoning to help protect our open hills. And one of the key zoning is the obvious one, open space residential. And this property where this developer wants to develop is right on open space residential. And what that really means for us, and down by the quarry on the west side of Highway One, that this project is going to be a major environmental impact, aesthetic impact on the hillside with these tall houses, as the environmental fellow that was up here talked about, this is just going to have an awful impact. And so I strongly urge you, let's preserve the zoning of open space residential. Now, another real important point, we don't want to violate the hillside preservation district. One of the key ordinance that we have protecting our hills is hillside preservation district. And in the purpose section, it, I want to just read, is the intent of this section to discourage the development of ridgelines. Any such, this goes on after a couple paragraphs, any such ridgeline development is of low profile, has minimum visual impact. Now, that's in your hillside preservation, right there. This has major hillside impact, visual impact. So I urge strongly for you to say no to this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Blinko. Sherry Rosenberg.
Hello. My, again, my name is Sherry Rosenberg. I happen to be the president of the homeowners association for the Seacrest property. I know that a number of the residents have sent letters to the commission. I know you've all had an opportunity to read them. My husband and I were also one of those that sent a letter. We definitely have concerns about this property, about the impact environmentally, but also aesthetically. We would be totally in support of, if you were going to approve the project, that it be built on the west end and not on the east end, where we would not have the opportunity to have the trails and have the walkways and such. As has been stated by other members or residents of our association or our homeowners, that we don't have the ability to cross the street and get across, to be able to walk, because of the high volume of traffic. But additionally, the impact on the road and the adding of the, or minimizing of the intersection there is really significant. I liked your question, Mr. Cooper, when you asked about, could it egress into their property? If it's going to be built, to me, it needs to be built with that in part of the planning, because that leaves the integrity of Fassler and leaves the safety. In our area by Seacrest, we have that middle merge lane there that you can turn into to turn in and out. It's the only thing that saves us from being able to get into and out of our units safely without having an accident. There've been many accidents up there on that part of this roadway because of folks traveling too fast, traveling way too fast. So again, we'd hope that you would take our comments to heart, and that if you're looking to approve the project, that you would approve it with those changes.
Thank you, Ms. Rosenberg. Elizabeth Eddy, that's the last speaker card I have. If anybody else is interested in speaking to this item, please turn in a speaker card. Thank you.
I'm a resident of Seacrest. I live at 913. I'm disappointed that the project is going through, because I really want to keep Pacifica green, but it looks like it's going through, and therefore, I commend you all for the amount of work that's going into the thought process. This is really terrific. I heard an idea broach that I'd like to second. Second the motion, that Fassler be in effect widened by using the property, part of the property that's going to be built on. Because I travel up and down Fassler a lot, yeah, the left-hand lane, turn lane, to get in is essential. Seacrest happens to have two exits, but I never use the upper exit because there is no visibility. It is completely unsafe. So I always use our exit that has the possibility of entrance. And I want that safety concern to exist for the people down the hill as well. I'm for the building on the west for a lot of reasons. I sent you a letter November 25th, and the reasons are a lot, they've been covered. But the safety one is safety and speed. So I'm on Fassler, and in the five years I've lived there, there were two major accidents into our property because people were traveling too fast. Got that? So when I get out there on Fassler, at the point where I get on, it's two lanes, and I don't breathe until I get to the point where I have two lanes, when there are two lanes going down. Because everybody behind me is traveling faster than I want to travel, I'm one of the seniors who wants a safe place to walk. I'm out. I'm done. Thank you. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Eddy. Well, that's all the speaker cards I have, as I said, so I think I'm going to go ahead and bring it back to the applicant to address any matters that were raised by the speakers, if the applicant wants to address those things. And I think there was at least one question raised about a left turn lane that perhaps the applicant could address.
Thank you. Let's see if I can address these. First of all, to go back to your question regarding the tree and the sculpting there for the line of sight, that was actually a condition from the EIR, the supplemental EIR. So, I mean, basically, we'll be abiding by whatever conditions we have to, to meet the Caltrans line of sight that is outlined in the AR for that, for that portion of the project. There is, there was a question, is there a left turn lane? And yes, there is a left turn lane proposed with the striping. Talking about the building height and the roof lines, you know, we did try to set these buildings down into the grade as much as we could. As you're well aware, there's quite a bit of grade there. The angled roof lines were really just to kind of mimic the hillside a little bit and the uneven contours there, and, you know, add a little dynamic quality to the design of the buildings. They're small features, so they're, you know, when we talk about that height, we're talking about a small feature that's, you know, 12 feet wide on a building and is sloping up. And so, you know, that was part of, you know, what we talked about early on with planning. It sounded like there's a lot of concerns about the project location. You know, when we started this project, obviously, we're not talking about the fact that there was an old project here, but this is the area that we were sort of directed to stay within, and we see why they did it that way in the first place. There's a lot of concerns with the slope up on the top of the hill, with that being a more unnatural area of the project site, and the lower portion being less of a, you know, historically natural area. As someone mentioned, the curve in the road and the ingress egress in that area is more of a challenge than as you get down further, further onto the road. Sorry, I lost my train of thought there for a second. And part of it is really just, you know, providing a buffer between what we're proposing and those who are already there, not blocking their views down the hill, not being right in their backyard. What we're asking for here is really not, you know, addition of units, it's a shifting of the zoning from one place to another place on the overall site. So, you know, realistically speaking, as the EIR alternative pointed out, it would be 23 units in that smaller area and one unit in the larger area. It just makes much more sense as you holistically look at the project site. You know, I may disagree with some of the findings of the AR as far as scenic vista. I mean, whose vista are we protecting here, and which vista exactly are we analyzing? There's, you know, hundreds of different vistas as you go up and down the road, as you live on top of the hill, as you travel on the highway down below the road. What's going to be more visible from where? You know, it's, could be debated forever, which is impacting which view more. But certainly, this sits down into the project site a little bit better than it would if it were up on the hill, and it's certainly not going to block the existing folks' view like it might if it were up on the hill. You know, one comment I would make, and I understand the issues on Fassler, I've driven up and down many times, tried to pull into the project site, out of the project site, with no safety or protection in any way, just, you know, waiting to get in there. You know, typically, what I would say is, the actual intersection will help reduce the speeds on that portion of the site. People tend to travel slower between intersections or where there are intersections than they would if they're just cooking down that hill, picking up speed the whole way down, and they don't have a, you know, a care in the world about people coming and going. So you may get a little bit of alleviation there. We did look at putting turn lanes in and out of the site on the project. There's, you know, a whole list of things that I could go into where that becomes really unfeasible and not the best case. There'd be a lot of, a lot more retaining walls, a lot of walls along the street, high walls. It would impact fires, access, and the slope of the road from Fassler up into the project site. It would require quite a bit more grading overall, and, you know, has some water quality issues that go along with it as well. And so we, I mean, we did analyze that as a, as a solution, and it was just, has numerous impacts that are much larger than the benefit that we saw there. And hopefully, I answered most of the questions that I heard, and if you all have any further questions.
Did you have a question you wanted to ask now? Commissioner Gordon, go ahead.
Hi. Question for you. One of the speakers was talking about the hiking trails and that they would be shared by all Pacificans. Is there, is that the intention of the applicant, to make the trails accessible to the public?
My understanding, and I can have him answer that question further, is that those trails would be accessible to the homeowners of this project as well as the project above. I don't know that technically that would make them, you know, accessible to the general public, or how that would be monitored, even if it wasn't the intent. But I would have the applicant clarify that for you. I know that they're getting, you know, giving up their rights to develop anything in there besides the trails that they're going to put in.
So in other words, to ask, so to be lawfully on those hiking trails, you would need to be a resident of either the, this, either Seacrest or this new?
He's shaking his head, yes, that that is the current plan for that area there. I mean, I was talking about, is it dedicated to the city? Is it kept? And then, you know, worked out between the homeowners, and I think that came to be the solution between the staff and the applicant.
Commissioner Cooper.
Thank you, Chair. Are you opposed to putting a turning lane in? I mean, I'm looking at the grades and looking at, I know the hill starts up tall, but there is obviously room for a deceleration lane and an acceleration lane in that area. And I'm genuinely concerned, because I have ridden my bike both up and down that street, and the current plan that I saw by the city engineer just simply takes Harmony at One and just disregards it, and I think so it has to be revised. That is, I mean, it's really important to me, that safety aspect on that road, just knowing how I drive, within the speed limit. But I know other people don't drive that way, and I know, hearing from the public, and I, it is very contentious pulling in and out of someone coming downhill. It's very nerve-wracking. Is that something you're willing to explore in your?
Again, I mean, I think that that was explored as the project was explored, and there are significant impacts that that adds to the project versus taking away.
Yeah, I'm aware of the cost impact and whatnot, that, you know, that you'd have to go back and look at it. I mean, I, I mean, the other things that you've done with the project in allowing the access for the trails to the upper development, you know, the increased trail areas that you've, that you've looked at, I mean, those are all really positive for me. This is one of my, this is my major sticking point, and it does have to go with safety. And I think that from, at least my point of view, that's what I'm here to do, is really to protect the residents, so. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Clifford.
Sorry, if I could add to that. And the civil engineer for the project, Carrie Mosca with Wood Rogers, on your concern about the additional lane onto the property.
Correct.
So, you know, lane would be 12 feet, and that would be significant, as Jeff mentioned, with regards to walls and grading and water quality. If, if the safety factor is really the concern, I was thinking perhaps we could, it would be a dedication, additional right-of-way to the city in order to do this, because you wouldn't want to have the lane and the pavement on the private property. But perhaps just a shoulder, so not 12 full feet, but maybe a dedication of four or six feet or something like that, to provide that little bit of additional buffer that you're talking about, a little bit of a pullout, if you will, and that would be in the public right-of-way. So it would be a dedication and a take on the project. It would impact the project, but, you know, full 12 feet is a lot. Maybe something like four, six feet might be a compromise.
Okay. Thank you.
Chair, if I may add another consideration for the commission, this project is proposed nearly at the limit of allowable coverage in the hillside preservation district. Without knowing the extent of this potential dedication and construction of an additional roadway feature, it's possible that could tip the project over the allowable coverage where it were to be constructed on private property where the hillside preservation district restrictions are applicable. The HPD zoning does provide for an exclusion for certain roadways, and if I could quote from page 402, section 9-4.2. if I could quote from page 402, section 9-4.2257, says, "The commission may recommend the exclusion of certain dedicated public streets from the definition of coverage, provided such public streets serve a major citywide circulation function. It would not otherwise be necessary to the design and function of the individual project." Based on what I've heard so far, it's not clear to me that this right turn lane would qualify for an exemption from coverage. And so we'd have to be very careful about requiring that of the applicant and causing him to violate the Hillside Preservation District limitation.
At what point in time does it not become, I mean, if we're providing a safe access on Fassler by not disturbing it, regardless of the development or not, it, it seems to me that we would be adding the turning, the turning lanes to facilitate Fassler safety.
Into this specific project, which would?
I'm not using the turning lanes. I'm not dedicating the turning lanes for the project. I'm trying to keep Fassler as safe as possible.
I, I understand the concern, Commissioner. What I'm saying is that there's only a narrow exclusion for streets that serve a major citywide circulation function, that would not otherwise be necessary to the design and function of the individual project. Sounds like these turning movements into and out of the project are of concern. That's for the commission to debate and deliberate. What I'm trying to highlight is that there's a strict quantitative cap on coverage that could be implicated.
Against lot coverage limits under the Hillside Preservation District.
If it was constructed on private property and the commission did not find that it met the, the qualifying exclusion provided here, then yes, it would count towards the coverage. That coverage were to exceed the limitation, would need to be offset somewhere else in the project. And that, the feasibility of doing that has not been assessed.
Are sidewalks considered part of that exclusion? Or are they included in the block coverage?
Sidewalks located where?
Are sidewalks, are they part of the exclusion? Are they not part of the exclusion? Are they counted as part of the developable, developable area?
Sidewalks in the right-of-way or sidewalks on the?
Sidewalks on the private side.
They, the sidewalks that are proposed for this project are within the calculated disturbance or coverage. And so they're already counted towards that limitation.
Can I ask a question on that? Would, if it was a dedicated area, it would no longer be private property? Would be, being constructed on the city's property, would that change the definition of that space?
In my opinion, not without an amendment to the zoning map, which again, hasn't been analyzed and included as part of this project.
I'd be a little concerned about our, this be a question for the city attorney, whether we as a planning commission can even accept property on, on behalf of the city in any event. So, I don't know if you need to answer this minute, but a concern.
If I could just add, it's not uncommon for the commission to review subdivision maps where those types of dedications are proposed. They're not accepted by the city until the council takes action on those dedications. And so
Noted.
There is a procedure for that.
Okay. Thank you. I don't see more lights for you at the moment. Well, sorry, take it back. Commissioner Stegic.
I'm sorry. I thought you were moving on. Mine's more for the city attorney.
Okay, excellent. Well, I, I think we'll let you know if we've got more. And I'm fairly certain we probably will. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring the matter back to the commission for deliberation. It looks like Commissioner Stegic, he wanted to start with a question or comment to staff.
Yeah, I think I've attended about 15 planning meetings of other entities in the last year. And over and over and over, we hear the general plan is required by the state and the zoning implements the general plan. I noticed in the 2007 minutes there, there was a lot of confusion among the commission between the, and among the developer lead, between the HPD and the general plan, which takes precedence. And the, the Hillside Preservation District is actually part of the zoning there. There is just voluminous mention of Fassler all over the general plan. I'm going to just give you three seconds here of it. Due to potential traffic impacts on Fassler, extensive cut and fill required. Page 44, where you had mentioned, had one there. The most scenic of the city's east west ridges are located here. Because of their visual importance to the city, these ridges have been specifically designated prominent ridge lines. The intention of this designation is to limit development on these ridges as much as possible. Owners are encouraged to focus development on suitable portions of their property off these ridges. Most of the major parcels in the Lindemar neighborhood are located adjacent to Fassler Avenue. The portion of this frontage west of Roberts Road is the highly visible extension of the Headlands Ridge, and it should be designated as a prominent ridge line. And then, of course, the scenic highway designation, where it specifically calls out Fassler as one of our three scenic corridors in Pacifica. My question is, is really for the city attorney. How much weight should we be giving the general plan? The, as we go up and down the state, some planning directors essentially say none. It's merrily advised, and some would say, general plan is absolutely a strictly interpreted document.
Well, general plans vary from city to city. Their interpretations vary from city to city. Generally speaking, general plans provide the blueprint for all of development within the city, and all the zoning has to be compatible with it. However, it is the city council's role to interpret the general plan and figure out what is compatible with the general plan.
Legally, is this parcel, is this development on the ridge line?
Turn it over to. So, we have the general plan diagram here, and it's not identified as a prominent ridge line. Yeah, so we can pass it around.
So the, the Fassler ridge line would not be a prominent ridge line?
On that map at least.
As that, as, as that term is used in the general plan, it's not a designated prominent ridge line, capital P, capital R. You may believe it's a prominent ridge line, lowercase p, lowercase r, and understand the significance of it in making your findings for the project approval. But it's not strictly a prominent ridge line for purposes of the general plan.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Well, if there's a particular way folks want to proceed, we brought it back for deliberation. Commissioner Clifford, you're often first to the draw, so I appreciate it.
In looking at this overall thing, it is clear to me, and I may be wrong, I may not be as clear as I think I am, but it looks to me like the first thing we should discuss and debate is whether or not we're going to do the density transfer. I think that's one of the first things we have to get out of the way.
Excellent. Well, I think that's as good a question as any for us to sort of take on. So what do you think?
I keep going back and forth with it, partly because of having been on the open space committee and reviewing the bill of states a lot. But the, I guess my overriding answer is, is that I would support the density transfer under some conditions. And the conditions have to do with the, the actual view, which would get into height limits and stuff like that, which we can discuss later. But I could, I could, I could support the density transfer.
Would you care to speak to that?
Sure. Well, anyone who was at the last meeting knows that that's my big issue. I'm, I'm definitely troubled by, basically, I mean, it's interesting, Commissioner Stegic's comments about, well, what is a general, what significance is a general plan really? Because it does give us an outline of what they think whoever drafted the general plan at that point thought should happen to these particular parcels. And the density, the, what is it? The, the density transfer basically subverts that directly and says, well, instead of doing what the general plan says, we're going to, we're going to do this instead. And so I'm uncomfortable with it, especially since the purpose of, the purpose of the HPD is to protect the, you know, the view shed, the, the ridge lines. And I just, I feel like, I'm very concerned that we're just basically frustrating the purpose of, of the general plan. I'm interested in what Commissioner Clifford said about, well, if there was significant attention to protecting the view shed, then maybe I could be persuaded. But right now, I'm, I'm, it's the single biggest, most troubling aspect of the, of the project for me.
So, when I considered this project back in 2007, HPD was foremost of my concerns. And over the course of several hearings, I was convinced that the density transfer was the best option going forward for a couple of different reasons. One, it did appear to be the safest alternative. The view lines were the, the better option there. Second, then as now, we are getting the conservation easement to wrap around the site. And we'll have a few more questions just about the four corners of that agreement, just to make sure there's no wiggle room around that. But if that conservation easement is as billed, and that really there is no way to kind of get around it, that's a valuable thing. And then actually, the area that was proposed for the actual building was more degraded than what was being, the land that was being transferred from. So, as, as, over 10 years ago, I again, wouldn't have a problem with the land, with the density transfer on that, on that issue.
Thank you. Commissioner Cooper.
Thank you, Chair. I mean, I always look at what's the best use of the property and to have the owners of the property be able to use the land accordingly as well. Obviously, it's not owned by a private entity who wants to bring it back to the way it was. And it's owned by someone who wants to develop it. And so I look at, well, what's the best use of that particular parcel, on the parcel itself, and what would be less destructive to the overall, the overall demographics and the overall geography of the parcel. And I'm, I do agree with, I think, the other people who commented that if you were to go on to the eastern portion of the parcel, you would decimate that, that hill. This is, appears to be a pretty viable place to build, with the least disruption to the overall environment. I think that with the dedication of the trails, with the offset from the side, I really just don't have that big of an issue with the, the density transfer and the dedication of that land. I think it's probably, is it the least impactful? No, it's not the least impactful, but it certainly could be a much larger project. And so I think that it's a responsible way to use the property. So, no, I don't have any problem with that, with the density transfer.
Thank you. Commissioner Stegic.
I tend to interpret the general plan a little more strictly than some other folks do. When I look, like page 43 here, "Much of the acreage of the Rockaway area includes steep, unbuildable slopes of the coastal ridges. However, there are locations where slope, soil conditions, geology, and access makes possible house or small cluster, cluster of houses unobtrusively placed on the hillside or in a hidden valley." Looking all times of day, driving that three or four times, I do find that the density transfer would probably make this less visible to the majority of the residents and less offensive. I'd like to remind public and commissioners that it's not a turnery option, B, C, or D. You know, you can have lower height, lower density, and decluster it. We need the housing. I really like, sorry, I'm going on further. Commissioner Kraus?
Thank you. Commissioner Krasky.
Yes. So my exposure to this project is fairly limited in timeframe. I haven't been around over the years to really track the progress of this project. But from what I've heard tonight, I would agree that we support the, the transfer of development rights. I think we, Pacifica does need more housing. And I think that this really would add the least disruption to the, to the natural environment. So I do support the density transfer.
Thank you, Commissioner Krasky. And I'll just add that I'm, you know, putting aside the other issues for the moment and focusing specifically on the transfer of development rights. I, I appreciated, you know, staff's analysis of this issue. And I, you know, in particular, with reference to the analysis on pages 149 and 150 of the packet, there's a pretty good, I think, sort of lay down of analysis that I would rely on in, in supporting the decision to transfer development rights. It looks like a fairly reasoned, sort of, sort of stitching together of why it is that it makes sense, and kind of what the thinking might have been that, that led to the land use designations in the first instance, sort of the desire to cluster. But having, you know, heard, you know, what we've, you know, heard over the course of the last couple of hearings, and having heard from folks who live along Fassler, who frankly are in favor of, I think broadly speaking, of the transfer of the development rights, it seems like the right way forward to me. So, you know, I think that we, it sounds like we could probably build a consensus on the commission around that particular issue, which of course leaves other issues that we can sort of take in any order if folks think is appropriate. Okay, well, it sounds like then Commissioner Cooper was suggesting that perhaps we would look at housing in particular. I guess we're talking about the, why don't you clarify?
Yeah, the, the, there's a proposal from the developer to pay in lieu fees of providing the housing. And, you know, I, I think we need the housing. So I'm, I'm in support of the staff's recommendation to.
I'm thinking that maybe the developer indicated that was off the table at this point, that the, that the
Is that off the table?
Was in agreement with you, that we're going to go forward with actually providing the housing rather than the in-lufi.
So Chair, the comments by the applicant or his representative this evening were the first I'd heard of that revision to the project description. And so it sounds like it's the applicant's intent to, you know, withdraw its request for payment of the in-lufi and to actually construct the units on site, which, you know, the commission's action, as it's written, would not be inconsistent with what the applicant has indicated by denying a request for in-lufi. I'll defer to the planning director or the city attorney if there's a preferential reason to, to change the action, but.
Well, I, it sounds like Commissioner Cooper's perspective is we ought to leave the action as it is, at least our recommendation with respect to the action, which is to, to deny that request, notwithstanding it may not even be the request at this point. Does anybody have anything further they want to say with respect to that? Or is everybody in agreement to move forward that direction? Commissioner Stegic.
I have a specific question for staff, and he may even have to go to members of the audience on this one. Are there public trails that this access will prevent, this project will prevent? Are there public trails currently accessible through there that this will prevent? Or is, are they discussing only private access to private trails?
There are none that I am aware of. I think that they may be discussing social trails.
Repeat that last two words.
Social trails, meaning ad hoc, kind of just trails that are created.
Thank you. Okay, so it looks like we've sort of dealt with the transfer development rights piece. I don't want to lose in the mix of all this. I guess there was a discussion of a heritage tree. I'm not really honestly sitting here right now clear on where we are with respect to the, that heritage tree, if that's, Commissioner Cooper?
I have no issues.
Okay. Commissioner Clifford?
Well, what I was, was hearing when they talked of the state's line of sight requirements, they're going to at least take that tree out. They will need to take that tree out.
Yep. Okay. Any other comments with respect to that? Commissioner Campbell?
No, no, not to the tree.
Okay, thank you. It sounds like then that we're probably not going to have any issues with respect to the tree. Commissioner Campbell, did you have a different matter you wanted to move to?
Just on the conservation easement.
Yes.
Will the easement prevent any access road development from Rockaway or any other area?
So the particular form has not yet been written. Whatever the applicant would propose would be Whatever the applicant would propose would be subject to review and approval by the city attorney's office. The applicant has indicated its intention currently to allow only the development of trails and wildlife-safe fences and seating areas. And so an access road from Rockaway Beach up to Fassler, for instance, would not seem to fit any of those allowable types of development, in my opinion.
That would be the question for me, and that's actually a deal breaker for me, is because you can see the paper streets coming up from Rockaway, almost abutting the, this development. You can, I know there's a lot of controversy over those streets and development up the hill on Rockaway, and I'm sure a desire to connect those two areas. And so I'd really want to make sure, I want to make sure tonight that that easement is going to absolutely not connect to Rockaway. I don't know if there's a way to do that tonight.
Yeah. I think we can accomplish that through the conditions, and we can work on some language here.
Okay. Thank you. I don't know what my other commissioners think about this, if anyone's yay or nay on that.
I support that. I support...
Looks like you've got enough support to move forward with looking at some language.
Great. Thank you.
Commissioner Stegic?
Tracing back to Commissioner Cooper's original suggestion on the maintaining the two throughput lanes and adding an acceleration lane on the shoulder, I just did a quick, you had the applicant or the applicant's representative say they were willing to contribute six feet there. I did a look up on 2015 Civic, zero to 60 miles per hour required 300 feet. You've got our city engineer saying 85% standard deviation there was 49 miles per hour. So obviously, six feet would be inadequate. The traffic pattern, as I see it, as presented by the city, seems to be dangerous to me. It seems to be non-functional, and it seems to be like it would defy common sense. I certainly appreciate Commissioner Cooper's suggestion, and I'm not sure the way to do that, whether it's a private road or what, but that seems a far superior traffic pattern to the one that is currently presented in our packets. Thank you.
Commissioner Clifford?
Well, I have issues with the height of the buildings, and I would like to talk about keeping them down at the 35-foot standard limit of the city.
So consideration of the alternative design and the alternative conditions of approval that I know we've got the language for in our packet. Can you direct us to where exactly that language is?
Of course, if you give me a moment. I think that there's at least a couple of different mechanisms for that. What I'm hearing from Commissioner Clifford is a general reduction in the height of the project, not specifically to the building A, removal of the pitched roof. It'd be helpful...
That is true. I'm looking, there are several buildings that are more than 35.
So all buildings 35 or 35 feet? All buildings limited to 35 feet?
And I would just highlight the fact that the 35-foot height limitation is applicable to this site. Ordinarily, to exceed the height limit would require approval of a variance. However, given that this is the PD Plan Development Zoning District, the zoning does allow deviation from certain development standards, including height. When the commission makes certain findings that it improves the project design, results in clustering, lesser disturbed area, and so forth, it may be possible the commission is unable to make those findings. And so the 35-foot height limit would be applicable. What impact that would have on the project, I'm not able to speak to. That's not been analyzed, we've not reviewed plans at a 35-foot height limit.
Did the applicant have any response to that? The feasibility or sort of the impact on the project?
Yes, a couple of things I just wanted to clarify. I think there might have been some, circling back just a little bit, might have been some misunderstanding about the four-foot or six-foot shoulder. That would be adding width to the road, not length of shoulder. So, you know, the length of that would be to be determined based on the length of the turning lanes. So that would be widening the road on that side was what was presented. I just wanted to clarify that. When we submitted the alternate heights, what we did is we just showed the one building that was the tallest building, but our intention would be if that was going to be the selected route, they would all be redesigned to be similar. Obviously, we wouldn't want the pitched roofs on some and flat roofs on the other. And so we did run through a table of what those heights would be if they were all designed similar, and I believe that was submitted with the package as well. If not, I can provide you those numbers. Basically, it's that Plan A is still at 40 feet per your package, and then the balance of them are at 35 foot, two inches. There's one at 36 feet, and the rest are well below the 35-foot number. So with some gyrations, we could probably make that happen. Really, the extra height, it's really oddly, the way it's, odd the way it's measured. If I just took a line along the topography of the hill and the bases of the homes, and I offset that up, the 35 feet, if we changed this, they would all fall underneath that line. What we have is the one odd condition where we have the driveway on the top, and this is part of the section you were given. We have the driveway on the top and the entry is on the side, sort of down the hill a bit. And so what happens is you measure from that low side up and over to the high side of the building. So if you actually measured the building on each side, you wouldn't get that height. And so that's why there's that one odd building on the site that's designed that way. So that is still, that one would still be sort of an issue to maintain. It would be at 40 feet, five inches. And the rest of them, we could probably, you know, again manipulate within that one foot that we're over. So, I mean, that's kind of the crux of that. If you look at that section, hopefully it's apparent. And then I just want to make sure there still does seem to be some miscommunication, and I apologize if this hadn't been communicated to staff and it wasn't received or reviewed. But this is the site plan with the BMRs indicated on it to be built and the four locations of those BMRs. So I'd be glad to hand you my copy of it if you guys didn't get that as part of our packet of updated items. I think that is my answer to those questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Cooper?
Yeah, I'd like to comment on the height of the buildings. You know, I'm not stuck to the 35 feet. I think that I'd sacrifice a little height for the views. So to see what that would look like architecturally, as far as having flat roofs versus those curved roofs or the architectural element of it, I think anytime we can reduce a building to see the views, I think that's what people are really concerned about, I'm for it. But I'm not a steadfast on that 35 feet. I'm not saying, hey, that has to be it. I think the recommendation by staff for that 40 feet, flat roof, make that consistent throughout the project, to me, would be a really good alternative.
Commissioner Gordon?
First, a general comment about process, and then I've got a question for staff. I like how we were approaching it like, let's deal with the transfer rights first, and then let's deal with the traffic, and then let's deal with the tree, da-da-da-da-da. Maybe we should stay, because I know that we've got Commissioner Stegic's comments about traffic, and we've got Commissioner Clifford's comments about the height.
Right.
Maybe we should just focus on one thing at a time. That would be my preference.
I think that would be fine.
And if we're at, if we're at traffic, let's go for that, and if we're at heights, let's go for that. I don't care.
All right, well, why don't we go ahead then and speak to, since we're talking about traffic, why don't we speak about, well, why don't we go ahead and speak to traffic and see if we can? That seems like maybe the issue that may require the most conversation at this point.
Chair, if I may just interject one fact. So I'd mentioned earlier, as the commission was considering the improvement of a widened street or a turning lane on private property, whether with or without dedication, that area would be within the hillside preservation district zoning. And the applicant is within 38 square feet of allowable coverage. So any improvement beyond 38 square feet would be violative of the hillside preservation district coverage limitations?
Thank you. Commissioner Stegic?
I hear Senior Planner Murdock's statement on the HPD, and I also think that is something that I would consider waiving to accomplish that. Quite frankly, I see the traffic plan as proposed in the packet as dangerous.
Commissioner Cooper?
I have to agree with my fellow commissioners. That's my holdup. I mean, I think that there's been a lot of compromises here, but to show a traffic plan that is not feasible for that area is really hard for me to go further on that. I think it needs to be studied. I do appreciate the flexibility, but without something in front of me, it's difficult for me to make that hurdle.
Commissioner Gordon?
I'm going to go out on a limb here and say that we've got, we've got a lot of creative minds here. And the purpose of the dedication to increase the circulation is for public safety. It's a major thoroughfare. That's got to be the basis of a valid waiver.
If I could through the chair, so the, as Senior Planner Murdock pointed out, that the exclusion of certain dedicated public streets from the definition of coverage, it would need to, we would need to hear some deliberation on how the commission felt that that exclusion would serve a major citywide circulation function and would not otherwise be necessary to the design and function of the individual project. So if we could hear your deliberation on those items, that would be...
I could jump right in. Anybody going up or down Fassler? I mean, I would hazard to say that that's probably the majority of Pacificans have at some point during the week gone up and down Fassler Avenue, and it makes it safer for us to go up and down Fassler Ave.
Well, and I would say that it is a major citywide, to your point, a major citywide concern that we're dealing with here, the ability for traffic to circulate up and down that major thoroughfare. I myself am not, and I would state just by way of advancing the analysis, I'm not myself convinced that it's an absolutely essential sort of addition to the project. I mean, I think it would make the project safer. I don't feel that it's a dangerous project. I believe that it would serve a, it would more greatly serve the citywide circulation concern than be essential, absolutely essential to the project. I do think that it would make the project a better one and probably safer. So I think there's a certain amount of nuance and threading of needle we need to do on all this, but I think the finding could be made. Go ahead, Commissioner Campbell.
So we're safely on the topic of traffic, safety. I, you know, I walked the site. There is a long, there's long sightlines that I think obviate a lot of the safety concerns. There's one issue I have. I don't know if we can put up the map of the...
The striping or just a vicinity map?
Yeah, the striping map. While that's going up, I don't agree with a waiver here because I just don't like the sequencing of it. I think that you don't develop, you don't submit plans, get the site all teed up, and then come, and then ask for the waiver. I think you got to get those safety concerns baked into the plan early because it sets up this conflict between HPD and the plans where you're kind of, you get into the situation where you're saying, well, we're forcing the developer to violate the HPD. Well, actually, no, we're not, no one's forcing the developer to violate the HPD. I think the safety concern should have been baked in earlier. So I don't agree with the waiver, and I don't think it's a citywide benefit. That said, I wonder if the safety concerns require the waiver. But the one thing I have an issue with is coming down westerly on Fassler Speedway, and you are, you have folks making a right turn out of the development on a, going west downhill, at the same moment that you've got people in a hurry merging into that lane, making a right as it goes from one lane to two, and just knowing, you know, how folks travel down there. I wonder if there's a way to just deal with that. That, to me, is the point where I think you're going to have accidents, is people merging into two lanes right where someone's merging, coming out of that right. And I think that's going to be a little tricky, and especially, you know, folks not being used to it. So I don't know if there's like a stop sign, that, a hard stop, maybe for people coming out of that development, to really watch out for people making that right turn as it goes from one to two lanes, or something like that? That, to me, just seems a dangerous situation because people do really...
Well, it may be helpful to hear from Senior Engineer Denguinas about what engineering techniques there are to divide the lanes, to increase awareness and visibility, to slow down traffic and whatnot. Things like lane deflectors and so forth can provide that visual and physical barrier. Whether it's an appropriate engineering application, I'm not qualified to make that statement.
Yeah, I don't know what can be done, but it seems like everything has to be thrown at it right there.
And to help my understanding, you're, I think, speaking about this area here, trying to keep merging traffic from going from this lane to the right lane as traffic is turning out?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Because people are going to be wanting to, they've been in this one lane choke, and as soon as they hit that two lane, they're going to want to break off to the right as soon as possible, and that's when people are going to be making that merge.
Which is why if you had an acceleration lane...
Good evening, Commissioner Raymond Denguinas, senior civil engineer. If that is, if the exit lane would be striped solid so that for a long period passed down west so that they can, no merging will occur until way further down the development.
So it won't be a broken line, it'll be a solid line?
It will be a solid, no switching until further down where the vehicle speed are more matched.
So maybe have those...
And then you could have vertical...
Those things you can kind of hit if you have to, but yeah.
Correct, to separate the traffic, and there's no merging in, right after the entrance of the project.
Okay, yeah, that's...
And that would occur also at the entrance, coming down Fassler, the dedicated right turn lane would also be striped solid so that there's no, well, throughout the intersection, everything would be striped solid so that no car should be passing the lanes so that everybody knows what to stay on their lanes in that intersection.
Okay. Commissioner Clifford?
Well, that was one of my issues that I had brought up with staff earlier. I've talked about some striping, you know, that would make things safer at that issue of those people. I'm sorry.
Can you speak up, Richard?
I've never had anybody complain about how loud I speak before. I had talked about this with staff and had talked about possible additional striping and stuff in there to keep people from merging at that point, and I'm glad to hear that it's being brought up by my fellow commissioners also. One of the concerns I have outside of the HPD coverage in terms of moving things back onto their property is that it might actually force even more grading on the hillside because they would be losing their line of sight. They weren't, they would be further back and then be looking at the hill behind that tree. And I'm concerned about doing too much sculpting of that hill up there.
Thank you. Commissioner Stegic? I'm sorry, Commissioner Cooper?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to remind the commissioners, even with the striping that's proposed, et cetera, you're still negating the harmony at one entrance and exits. So there's just not enough room there, in my opinion.
I'm wondering if the city engineer could speak to that. I'm a little, I understand what you're saying. I just want to, is there anything that can be done to address what sounds like a pretty big concern? This sort of notion of negating the sort of circulation into and out of harmony at
Again, when I...
Again, when I sketched or drew this striping plan, I did not really take into consideration the entrance to the Harmony at One. I just wanted to see whether this four-lane in-out configuration would fit. The Harmony at One is a right turn in, right turn out, so there is no left into Fassler Avenue. So going up Fassler, it's natural or easier to decelerate and get into the project. And then with the right turn out, it will, the uphill, they haven't had, gathered enough speed yet, so the right turn out of Fassler does have a little bit more safety than going downhill.
Are you reasonably satisfied that, you know, the Harmony at One kind of circulation issues can be integrated into all this?
I have not evaluated, and like I said, it's not been evaluated for the purposes of the striping plan.
I see.
So Ray, did you consider just a right-hand turn off of this current development rather than a left-hand turn up the hill? Do the same thing you're doing at Harmony at One, limit the no-left turn off of this current development, so you couldn't, you cannot go uphill. You have to turn right.
Yes, so, yeah, there would be, no, if you eliminate the left turn from this, it would, they would have to go somewhere, go back down and come back up again somewhere to make a U-turn.
Which is the same thing that Harmony at One has to do.
Well, Harmony at One, they have the option of going to Roberts Road and get into, they have another exit in Roberts Road to make that right turn, left or right into Fassler.
I follow you. Thank you.
And the commission may care to consider that the Harmony at One project, while I think it has a large image in our minds because its prominent location, its history, et cetera, it's really only 10 lots with 10 potential homes off of that accessway. The density at this site is more than double if this project were to be approved as proposed. And so the commission may weigh that consideration. Where should we have the greatest, most modernized circulation improvements? Is it for the project that has, you know, 24 units going downhill where there may be the greatest traffic hazards, or 10 or 11 single-family homes exiting uphill? It may want to weigh that factor.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
With the new, I want to say granny units, with the new...
Accessory dwelling units?
Yes. I mean, that could double Harmony, right?
My recollection is there may be restrictions in the CCNRs for that project that prohibit accessory dwelling units. It's been some time since I looked at them. That project was approved prior to the current state law, and so at that time, it's my recollection, there's a restriction on that for most of the Harmony proper units, the 10 lots off of this accessway. There is a lot that is to the east of this, sometimes known as the Hussin Lot or 4,096 Fassler. That project was initially approved at the time of the Harmony approval with an accessory dwelling unit, and it may be possible, in my recollection, to construct one at that site.
Right. Well, also, I don't want to go too far down the road of discussing Harmony since it's not at issue and it's not agendized. But I guess when the time comes for circulation to be dealt with, we'll have to deal with that. That will come before us, I imagine.
The individual homes will require Planning Commission approval of a specific plan. A larger subdivision-type improvement unless the applicant sought to modify the subdivision is not likely to come before the commission.
All right.
Commissioner Stejic, this time I'm sure your light is on.
Absolutely. Can you clarify, are you saying that if Harmony One was subdivided, it would not come before the Planning Commission?
That's not at all what I said. I said if the applicant was intending to modify the subdivision, it would then come before the Planning Commission?
Thank you.
All right, so I'm struggling to sort of recap kind of where we are with respect to traffic. You know, there's been a fair amount of concern expressed or even thoughts expressed regarding the possibility perhaps of maybe taking the applicant up on the offer with respect to maybe some dedication of land on property. I know there were some concerns addressed about, you know, the impact under the lot coverage limitations in the hillside preservation district, some thoughts about maybe waiving that requirement and others indicating that maybe a waiver was inappropriate. So that's kind of the gist of kind of what I'm hearing here. I myself was of the view that the plan as presented this evening looked feasible, tenable. I didn't think it was unsafe, recognizing that I'm not necessarily, that isn't necessarily what all of my colleagues think. But I don't know if anybody else has anything to add in terms of where we kind of are, which it sounds like is kind of over a, across the spectrum. Commissioner Cooper.
So I'll just keep it simple. I'm against the project either for continuation or whatever because of this single issue.
Could you say that a little slower? I didn't catch it.
Because of the traffic issue, I think it should be an integral part of the submission for us to look at, and it is that important to me where I want a solution before I would approve it. And so either continue it and provide a revised plan, or I just am stuck on that issue where I'm not in favor of this. For the rest of it, I'm fine.
Please, go ahead, Commissioner Gordon.
I just wanted to give Commissioner Cooper an op, can you be a little more specific? Is there, just in case it does get continued on this grounds, it'd be great for staff probably to find out more about what your concerns are and what you would like to see.
So what, again, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I'm looking at this, understanding the traffic that goes down there from just a very basic standpoint. The revised traffic plan that's shown here that we saw today is, does not take into account the entire needs of the city. To me, it negates the Harmony at One. It provides a very difficult way for people to get around. I do bike this road as well. There's not enough shoulder. It puts people on the sidewalk very close to the traffic. Even as presented, it doesn't provide you that safety comfort for that hill or that slope. If there was a limitation on, hey, no left-hand turn going up the hill, maybe I might have a little more say. Maybe I might say, okay, you know, that passes that threshold for me, but at this point in time, as presented, it doesn't pass that threshold.
So it sounds like what I'm hearing is that if you were speaking for the commission as a whole, we would want more analysis of the traffic circulation plan here at the project site, in particular, given concern to things like integration with Harmony at One, sort of bike safety, pedestrian safety.
Correct.
Those sorts of matters, and just sort of how it integrates with the broader, you know, sort of traffic circulation in that area.
Correct, and that's my opinion.
Okay. Other thoughts?
Commissioner Gordon.
Sure. Anybody who drives down from Terranova High School down to Highway One knows that that's a very, very dangerous section of the road. So I would want to be 100% comfortable that we've thought through the traffic circulation issues in that area, just 100%, of this air on the side of caution, and if there's any doubt, jeez, this is the time to really iron it out. So I'm in favor of, I guess I support Commissioner Cooper's position.
Commissioner Stejic.
I support Commissioner Cooper's decision. I also have an additional item I'll bring up shortly.
Does it relate to traffic?
Does not.
Okay, we'll hold it for a second then. Thank you. Commissioner Clifford.
Yes, I could support Commissioner Cooper's position also. I also want to be absolutely certain that we've got the best traffic circulation for this project when we're done.
Commissioner Campbell.
Well, I'm generally comfortable with the traffic circulation aspects of this development, but it looks like we're headed towards a continuance on it. But at least to make it clear to the applicant, for me, to the extent that I could vote for a continuance, it is on a singular issue of what, how do you get out in Harmony at One versus this project? I think that's a fair concern, a fair question, and if I were the, I guess if I were the Harmony at One, folks, I would want that answered as well. But that's my only concern.
Well, I would echo, I think, what Commissioner Campbell has to say. In the interest of disclosure, I actually live off of Manor, so I am probably somebody who isn't on this street every day, so I have a little less sort of day-to-day familiarity with it. It's a little less common that I would be there, but I, for that reason, I feel inclined to defer to my colleagues who perhaps have a little more sort of day-to-day familiarity. But like Commissioner Campbell, I was comfortable with frankly what I saw in the plans, but I was certainly concerned about integration of the Harmony at One project into the schematic, which I guess hadn't been done. So that said, you know, regardless of whether my views or my concerns are narrower, there are at least three members of the commission, maybe more, who express broader concerns. So I don't know if there are particular tools or instruments or thoughts that staff has with respect to, you know, sort of the, sort of the expressions of concern that the commission's sharing right now, whether there are studies or other things that would be appropriate to address these matters.
Well, I think that I understand the concern because Senior Civil Engineer Don Guinness, you know, you said on the record that he didn't consider, there may not be a conflict with the Harmony driveway, but it would be appropriate to study it and then come back with some more information, as well as anything that, any tool, striping for the transition concerns for people coming down the hill as well. I think I heard that the commission would like some more information there as well.
Yeah, yeah, and it sounds like concerns with respect to maybe bike and pedestrian safety as well, the extent to which those matters can be vetted and additional information provided. I think that would really, I think that would comprehensively address what I've, at least what I've heard. Okay. It looks like the direction we're headed is toward a continuance, but I think we had been talking about height. It's probably appropriate for us to take that matter on in any event, just so that we don't leave any dangling pieces, and it sounded like Commissioner Stejic might have another issue to throw into the mix.
I'll confirm Commissioner Clifford on 35 feet, and I'm curious what the applicant's flexibility on offering the good citizens of Pacifica access to their scenic vista that they surrendered to you in this proposal.
So the question is the extent to which the applicant would be willing to make the scenic vista accessible to public as a whole? Is that...
No, that's correct. The good people are giving up, you know, 1,000 people an hour are giving up their view for at least 30 seconds there as they go by, and I'm curious if you'd be willing to extend public access there to allow them to access the scenic vista they have at this very moment.
Yeah, I think the whole issue around that is the liability of opening that to the public. Anybody walking on that trail gets hurt, breaks their leg, twists their ankle, pretends to fall, you know, it just opens up a huge area of liability where if it's managed between the two homeowners associations, that liability is restricted, you know, within those groups. So I think that's the concern that the applicant has with opening that up to public use. And again, I think there was talk, I don't know where it went, with just dedicating the land to the city, in which case the city could have that liability and have it open to the public.
What's the rough altitude gain there, and is there disability access on that trail?
I don't believe there will be ADA access on that trail. I think from the current project site where we're proposing it, to the top of that is several hundred feet of topography.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Stejic. Commissioner Gordon.
Sure. I'm, so the applicant just mentioned that they'd be willing, they'd be open to ceding that land to the city. I mean, GGNRA land is all over there. It's all around there. What about thinking creatively? Why not? It just seems logical to incorporate that area into public space, considering there's all kinds of public trails, like there's the Baciano Trail just to the north of that property parcel, and that's GGNRA, and that would eliminate all the liability issues.
Maybe we could ask staff to perhaps take a, you know, a look at what the process would be for something like this.
I'd be way more excited about this project if I could see, if the public could really get access to that land. I mean, right now, I'm not excited at all.
We can bring up more information on that.
Thank you. So we'll go ahead and ask staff to analyze it, and, you know, perhaps we can hear some more about, you know, what would be involved. I know that we've got, you know, myriad issues involving liability even, you know, from a public perspective as well, so, but be interested to hear more about it. Commissioner Campbell.
Yeah, I'd be in favor of public access. I think the way it usually works is the developer forms the HOA, and then the HOA usually dedicates or opens these things up to the public, but then the liability transfers to the HOA as opposed to the developer taking the liability at the outset, and I think that's maybe the concern. So if it plays out the way it normally does, this will be accessible to the public, but it would be good to get it outlined.
Fantastic. Oh, thanks for raising that question, Commissioner Stejic. But I'm going to bring us back then to height, which was the other issue that we had outstanding. And Commissioner Clifford had expressed a view that the height ought to be limited to 35 feet as to all structures in the development, and so that's kind of where we are. Commissioner Gordon.
Sure. I had a question for staff on this, on packet page 152, under D, the View Corridor Policies, under the Discussion Section. It says, "The proposed project would temporarily obstruct Westbound Motorist Ocean View and along Fassler Ave, which is a proposed scenic roadway. However, only Building B and proposed landscaping would create the obstruction in the development." Building, where's Building B? I'm confused.
So Building B is a cluster located along the western edge of the site. If you give me a moment, can hopefully identify the number of buildings that comprise Building B? So it looks like it's four duplexes all along the western edge of the site and a total of eight units.
And, okay, and that's the source of the obstruction?
I believe that's what the aesthetic analysis in the EIR concluded.
Okay, and reducing the height limit to 35 feet would affect or wouldn't really have an impact on the obstruction?
That would not be sufficient, in my understanding, to eliminate any of the significant visual impacts. It would require elimination of Building B or a portion of Building B to eliminate those impacts.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. So, okay, so that's really not a consideration then in terms of height, reducing the height limit down to 35?
I think it's stated in certain parts of the analysis that there may be marginal improvements and reductions to the significant impacts, but nothing meaningful to the point where it would reduce those to less than significant levels.
Since we're going to continue the item anyway, would my colleagues think about the possibility of just asking for some analysis from the applicant and staff as to the, sort of the feasibility, a little further analysis as to the feasibility of bringing the building heights down to 35? Was I, I was understanding the applicant to say that there were some buildings where he didn't actually view it as feasible to bring it down to 35, but somewhere it could be done? Do you think a little more information along those lines might be useful to bring back, and we can sort of take it up at the, you know, the next time we have this matter in front of us? It may be that...
That is a reasonable approach to this.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yeah, I think so, although I'm going to cheat and just get my comment in. I would be in favor of looking at the 35 feet. I do, my memory's getting hazy on this, but I do remember 10 years ago, this was a deal, and we went to 30, we were considering 38 feet, but it was because of the underground parking garage, and so buildings were going to be on top of the underground parking garage, and that was part of the trade-off for the going above 35 feet and the HPD concerns. And so here, we don't have the underground parking garage. That was the trade-off back then. That's one of the reasons I voted for it, going over 35 feet, but since I don't have that here, I'd kind of be interested in that 35-foot height limitation. So, and looking at it again.
Commissioner Stejic.
You know, up and down the coast side, we see municipalities using story poles to determine the effect on that, and I think specifically on that hot building height B, I think the story poles would be an excellent use there just on B and get an idea of how high that building really is there. And if story poles show that there's no obstruction, I wouldn't have a problem with the original height, but I'd like to see it with story poles before I voted for it. Thank you.
Thank you. So it sounds like... Thank you. So it sounds like some additional analysis of sort of the feasibility and sort of the practicality of the 35, implementation of a 35-foot height limit for all the buildings. I guess what I would state is that I'm not necessarily wedded to 35 feet, frankly, but since we're going to bring the matter back, you know, it sounds like some members of the commission would be interested in a little more analysis on that. Commissioner Gordon?
I just voted yes.
Excellent.
Yeah, I'm, I think there needs to be, we need to be cognizant of the trade-off. I think the associate planner, Murdoch, noted that the purpose of the 30, of exceeding the 35 feet, there was some design, there's some value in terms of design, right?
That was staff's opinion in analyzing the project, that the trade-off to cluster this development, to achieve a transfer of development rights and so forth warranted the increase in height to exceed 35 feet. The analysis and staff's opinion of those trade-offs is contained in the resolution. I'll try to find the page number quickly if I can.
That's okay. So, but my point, though, is that, so there's value in exceeding the 35 feet given design goals, but at the same time, it'd be interesting to know the trade-off in terms of the extent that that results in some kind of visual impact, negative visual impact, which I think gets to Commissioner Stejic's point.
Well, I think if you're talking about the visual impacts from the environmental review standpoint, I'm not aware of any height reduction, you know, barring something drastically lower than 35 feet that was identified to reduce or eliminate the significant environmental impacts to the aesthetics. So it's really the building placement that's driving that, not the building height.
Okay.
At least within the range of heights that were considered in the EIR, which was 35 feet and then the proposed project height.
So then my fellow commissioner's interest in keeping it at 35 feet is in just being consistent with the code? Is that it?
Commissioner Cooper?
Yeah, Chair, thank you. I'm not interested in the 35-foot as a solid line. To me, I want to bring it down to what's feasible. So if the building happens to be 37, 37 and a half, because that's the way the floor height meets the roof, fine. What I want to avoid, though, is having a 35-foot ceiling and then having a big air conditioning unit on top, which doesn't count towards the height. I mean, obviously, what we're trying to do here is reduce those heights for a visual aspect of it, but I don't think we should be stringent on saying, in my opinion, to be 35 feet and destroy a whole level of a project. If it just happens to be, it needs two more feet just to make it feasible, then I think that's acceptable for me.
Commissioner Stejic?
I walked that area and drove it several times. I'm convinced there will be a public loss of scenic view there, and I think we might say that the EIR hasn't identified a specific problem over 35 feet, but obviously 100 feet would still be a problem there, perhaps even bigger problem. The, I'm convinced that there would be a benefit to having 35 feet there just from walking there, looking at it. Perhaps story poles and location would convince me otherwise, specifically only on Building B, but as it stands now, I support the 35-foot height limit, which I believe is alternative D.
Chair, I think it's helpful, and I think Commissioner Stejic touched on an important point. It's easy to conflate the consideration of the environmental document with the consideration of the project. The environmental document has to achieve certain procedural and substantive components to identify alternatives and potential impacts and potential mitigations.
Right.
The commission still has broad discretion in reviewing the project and making the findings for approval for the permits. It may find benefit to the design from the scale, the massing, the shadows, the aesthetic, it's so on and so forth, for the project permit findings that are unrelated and, you know, separate from the sequoia findings of significance. So it's not as though the commission has to take all of the sequoia analysis and apply it to have a bearing on the project permits.
Right.
It can detach to the extent that the impacts wouldn't exceed those evaluated in the sequoia document.
But it also is the case that we're adopting a statement of overriding considerations with respect to aesthetics and...
And noise.
And noise. So, okay, thank you. So staff has, I guess, had the benefit of, you know, kind of picking up our perspective as to this issue. It is fair to say that we're got kind of a diversity of views. It looks like the direction we're going is to continue this item. I don't have a motion, but before I ask that, I want to make sure that there isn't any other thought or questions or concerns that we should get picked up before we do that. Commissioner Stejic, I see your lights on.
Over and over again, up and down the coast, municipalities are entertaining the option of a completion bond there. I could see Sequest residents in three years looking at this project, have it not, have it gone halfway, saying, "I'm surrounded on all sides by incomplete projects there." I'm curious if any consideration of a completion bond for this project has been thought of.
A completion, can you repeat that? A completion of what?
Completion bond, encouraging the developer to actually complete the project in a timely fashion.
No, I mean, that we don't have policy provisions for that adopted, so no.
What we do have is a mechanism through the subdivision to ensure that the subdivision improvements are accomplished, the access driveway, the drainage, things like that, but as far as construction of the project itself, as the planning director indicated, our policies and our ordinances do not currently have that mechanism.
Thank you. Commissioner Gordon?
I was going to make a motion.
I'd like to hear it. Go ahead.
I'll move that the current, that the project that's currently under consideration be continued to the soonest possible date. Do you guys want to talk about dates?
We would recommend March 19th.
How's that sound?
March 19th.
Okay, to March 19th?
Okay, and, you know, to receive more information on the various matters that we've discussed here this evening. Commissioner Clifford?
I'll second that motion.
I've got a motion in a second. Why don't we go ahead and vote? So that motion was unanimously approved, so the matter will be continued to March 19th, I believe it was. Thank you. Gentlemen, do you feel the need for a brief break here? We have another item. Maybe we take five minutes?
And I'm probably not going to be able to come back.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Clifford. Okay, Commissioner Clifford, thank you for sticking it out. Six of us will return.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yep.
We're going to go ahead then and continue with item number one on our agenda, which we heard second. We want to thank the applicants for their patience in terms of the changing of the order of agenda. And again, the record will reflect that Commissioner Clifford has left for the evening. This item is Site Development Permit PSD 81917, Use Permit UP 8517, and Variance PV 51917 to construct a 1,698 square foot two-story addition to an existing 5,000, I'm sorry, 3,503 square foot, two-story, single-family residence, a patio area, deck, and an uncovered parking area, and removal and replacement of one heritage tree, all at 674 Corona Drive. The Assessor Parcel Number 022210090. The recommended sequel action is Class 1 and Class 3 categorical exemptions pursuant to Sections 15301E and Sections 15303A of the Sequel Guidelines, and the recommended action is to approve as conditioned. We'll take our staff report, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. I am Assistant Planner Bonnie O'Connor. The project at 674 Corona Drive includes an approximate 1,700 square foot two-story addition to the north side of an existing 3,500 square foot two-story, single-family residence. The upper story addition would include a hallway off the existing living room, which would lead to a family room, master suite, half-bath, and second laundry closet. The lower addition would include an unconditioned recreational room. The recreational room would include a barbecue area, fire pit, seating area, and jacuzzi. The recreational room would be fully enclosed with glass, solid walls, and folding doors that would lead to a new permeable patio. A new uncovered parking area would be located in the northeast corner of the property. The surface of the parking area would be constructed with permeable pavers. Exterior stairs located between the parking area and the patio would provide access to the residence. A majority of the property would remain as undisturbed and naturally landscaped land. New landscaping would be installed generally on the west and east sides of the addition. The proposed landscaping would include planting of 24-inch box trees and 1.5 and 15-gallon shrubs and flowers. When matured, the proposed six-to-seven-foot tall plants on the west side of the structure would screen the bottom portion of the structure from downslope viewpoints, including Cabrillo School and Pacifica State Beach, resulting in a structure that would appear smaller than proposed. In 1999, the Planning Commission approved a use permit and a site development permit for the construction of the existing, single-family residence. The Planning Commission also approved a variance, which allowed the development to reduce the front and east side setbacks. In discussing the variance, the 1999 Planning Commission staff report noted that the topography and the large erosional gully located in the central area of the property presented an unreasonable hardship and justified the variance. Due to these statements in the 1999 staff report, staff had the city's consulting engineer firm, Cotton Shires and Associates, review the preliminary geotech report. Cotton Shires recommended that the geologic hazard evaluation be prepared and the geotechnical report be updated based on these results. The applicant's geologic hazards evaluation determined that the dormant landslide that was previously mapped on the property no longer had the potential for future significant movement due to up slope drainage improvements that were made along Corona Drive. In response to the geologic hazard evaluation and recommendations, a supplement to the preliminary geotech report was prepared to include recommendations for improved house peers with additional depth, reinforcement, and lateral restraint, and also recommended not backfilling the retaining walls for the addition to avoid placement of load upon underlying soils. Cotton Shires has reviewed the supplemental materials and concluded that the basic recommended engineering approach and current building layout are geotechnically feasible, and recommended that further geotechnical engineering and plan review occur prior to the approval of a building permit. This requirement has been added to condition of approval number four. Similar to the existing residence, the applicant is seeking a variance to reduce the front setback for the proposed addition to 12 feet and nine inches. The property, which is zoned agricultural with a B5 overlay, is located on a property with an approximate 40% cross-slope. The staff report presents the approximate cross-slope of other developed properties with identical zoning and concludes all sites that have a cross-slope that is approximately 25% or less, which allows for an appropriate setback. Therefore, all developed sites in the area under the same zoning district as the project have the privilege of having a less-slope property that is able to accommodate an appropriate setback. The project site does not provide the same privilege due to its slope. Additionally, the reduced front setback is similar in nature to the existing residence and single-family residences located to the south of the property, which are located in the R1 Single-Family Zone Residential District. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission find the project exempt from the California Environmental Quality and approve the use permit, site development permit, and variance for the proposed project as conditioned. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Actually, I have a question. I'll just ask it right now, and I feel like I should know this, but what is an unconditioned recreational room? I'm not sure I understood what that means, just as a definitional matter.
Limited, or no insulation?
Ah, okay.
Not connected to the heating and cooling system of the home?
Thank you. Appreciate it. Commissioner Gordon?
Thanks, Chair. Question on Package Page 68. There's two before and after photos? Are you with me?
Yeah.
And can you describe what they're showing, because I'm having a hard time seeing the difference between the before and the after?
Yeah, they're easier to see in the full-size plans that you guys received, but basically it's giving you two viewpoints, two downslope viewpoints. The one on the further left-hand side is a viewpoint from the Pacifica State Beach parking lot, the top being the existing conditions and the after shot being with the proposed addition. The photos to the right of it are from the Cabrillo Elementary School parking lot, and again, the before is the existing and the after is after the proposed addition.
Thanks.
I don't know if you needed through the chairs. So there's that blue thing in the first set of before and after photos?
Yeah.
You see above it, sort of like one of those pictures when you were a kid, you had to find what's different?
[laughing]
If you keep going up the picture to the top, you'll see that there's an addition of a house or part of a house above it.
Okay, thank you. That's what I was looking for. Thanks. Thanks.
And maybe Bonnie can help us on the second set of...
Yeah, again, at the scale, it's a little bit harder, but you'll see a slight blue structure above a minivan, and if you keep following up, you'll see the addition there as well.
Got it. Thank you.
Commissioner Cooper?
Thank you, Chair. I have a question in regards to the street itself on Corona Drive. There was a, I think it was on Higgins, there was a street that we did not improve all the way to the end of the property line, and it seems like this is the same case here, but it seems they were proposing a driveway that's way into the street. So what is the designation of that street of where it ends there and then where it goes to the new driveway? What is that street? Is that a public street? It's not built to public standards, so is it a private street? What is it exactly?
It would still be public right-of-way, and so the driveway would extend into the public right-of-way.
So from the end of that cul-de-sac street to where that new proposed driveway in is a non-conforming street, correct? Per city standards?
Well, I believe the street is constructed 20 feet in width and does not have sidewalks on either side. Whether that's conforming to street standards or not would be a question for our Engineering Division staff. I'm not sure if Mr. Denguiness is still in the chamber, but that improvement was approved, to my knowledge, by the city engineer. To what standard? Hopefully, Mr. Denguiness can clarify.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Yes, the extension of Corona was built with the development of 650 Corona, if you might remember, and there was a deliberation whether what width of road was to be built there, and eventually, the 20-foot pavement width was approved.
So in the case of that driveway, if they had to service that other side of that residence, has the fire department looked at it, and are they okay with just pulling into a dead end and servicing that driveway?
So there's a fire turnaround, actually, before the driveway.
What page is that on?
Um, 56.
Packet Page 55. You can see a portion of it. There may be a better plan sheet that Ms. O'Connor will be looking for, but you can see the main driveway to the residence, sort of in the bottom center. Directly across beneath that, you can see one element of the turnaround. Actually, forgive me. If you look at the left of the property line that's shown there, the driveway to the residence, go to the right of that, and you'll see the upper part of the turnaround and the bottom head of that hammerhead at the bottom, plan sheet.
It's also displayed on Packet Page 58.
So are there existing curbs and gutters all the way to the second driveway, or is that proposed?
There is an existing curb gutter on both sides of the 20-foot extension.
Which goes into that catch basin all the way beyond the driveway?
Correct. There's a new catch basin right at where the previous gate was.
Previous gate was. Okay. That was my question. Thanks.
Commissioner Stejink?
I just know that there's parcel. There's blue and black tarps on the ground roughly 60 yards by 20 yards. Is that erosion control or planning, or what are they doing there?
I think that might be a question for the applicant.
That's not his parcel. It's just the one on the west side of the driveway. Commissioner Cooper just mentioned. Maybe 60 yards of blue tarp there.
60 yards of blue tarp. That's a lot of tarp.
A lot of tarp. Okay.
I'm not familiar with the blue tarp that you're referring to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor. I think we'll go ahead then and open the public hearing, and we'll start with the applicant and hear what the applicant has to say.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Javier Chavarria with JC Engineering. And rather than going, as I normally do, on a lengthy description of the project, I think staff has done an excellent job describing all the little details. I'm going to try to address the questions and comments that have come up. First of all, in 1998, Corona Drive stopped right at the beginning of the property. When 674 was going to be developed, Corona had to be extended up to the point where the turnaround is. And that turnaround, if we look at Page 55 of your commission package, on the left side of the exhibit, that's where the northern property line, I'm sorry, southern property line of the property is, and that's where the main driveway to the garage of the residence is located. Right where it says Corona Drive, that's exactly where the turnaround is located. So at the time of the construction of the main residence, that's as far as the street was constructed. The fire truck turnaround was built, and that was the extent of the improvements. When the house at 650 Corona was constructed, the street was extended from the turnaround to the property line of 650. So that street is the narrower portion that is shown on the right hand of the exhibit. So as of today, Corona Drive is improved within the right-of-way, all the way to the end of 674 Corona and to the beginning of 650 Corona. So the driveway that we are proposing is going to be off from the newly constructed extension to Corona. As far as the blue tarp, that is erosion control. There was some dirt that was placed in that location after the exploration of the soils, and in preparation for some of the construction, there was some fill from a different property that we obtained a building permit so that we can put some of that material that may be used in the construction of the addition. So the blue tarps are erosion control, protection. If you were to go closer there, there is strobe lamp, wattles, and all the necessary controls in there. As far as the design of the home, basically, we tried to continue with the same appearance that the home had, and as you can see on the exhibits that were presented, it's really not intrusive into the views from all the general areas down below. We believe that the addition really flows with the house, an explanation as of the intent of that unconditioned space. The main portion of the house, the second floor, is what's going to be part of the living space. The lower area was initially intended as an outdoor area for the home, because the site is so steep, we don't have really any areas for enjoying the views and, you know, enjoying the good weather that we recently have had, so we proposed that area. But we realize also that it can be very windy at times, so that's how it was conceived as being enclosed. Basically, on a beautiful day, we can open, and we have a nice open area, and when it's not as nice, we can close it and still enjoy, you know, some usable open space. I'm not sure if there is any other question or any other clarifications that you may need.
Thank you. I think that's it for right now. I appreciate it. Thank you. I do have a speaker card for Michelle Garcia. As we'll go ahead and ask Ms. Garcia to come up. There are no other speaker cards, so if you want to speak to the item, go ahead and submit one. Otherwise, we'll hear from Ms. Garcia.
Hi. So I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my husband, Dave. We live at 650 Corona, and we have a few concerns. First, we both do support this project. We have no problems with them wanting to extend their home and add to it. We understand completely what it means to want to have your dream home and live in it for the rest of your life, as I'm sure you all remember the trials and tribulations we had just getting our house started. The drainage that was put in and the city right-of-way that we put in was an improvement to the end of Corona, and I do believe I submitted, and I have with me tonight, that 674, when it was built, was supposed to actually do those improvements, but they didn't. It was a condition of approval that was never met, for whatever reason. So our concern is, is that drainage going to stay in place? Because where they have their proposed parking, they're saying pavers. Well, where's that water going to go? Is that water just going to go off the side? Because what's below that is our property, and so we don't want any erosion. We paid a lot of money to have the drainage put in to ensure that the water didn't go anywhere other than where it was supposed to. We're also interested in a buyback for that, and I have reached out to the city about, they said an agreement needed to be put in place. I'm not sure what that could probably be a sidebar. It probably doesn't need to be addressed tonight, but we are looking for that because we actually improved 674 so that we could get to 650 Corona. We also are very concerned about the traffic, because if they're going to park there, we back down, which I'm sure you will remember that conversation, we back in and out of our driveway. So if we're backing down and their driveway, so we come down our driveway, their driveway is here, there's going to be cars coming in and out of there. So there's no sidewalks and there's no street lighting. So if we're walking our two dogs, and it's dark, and somebody comes to back out, and they don't see us because there's no lighting, so now there's an issue. There's a pedestrian issue, for sure. Before, when it was just us, it was just us living there, and there wasn't going to be any traffic, but now there is an issue. So streetlights, accessibility, traffic, and it is going to be a multi-family dwelling now. When they moved in, they told us they were doing this because they were going to have more people living there, so there's going to be more people, which means more cars. They're talking about their outdoor recreation and their parties. Well, that just means more people, more people, more parking. So those are our concerns. We want to make sure that the drainage is still in place. We want to make sure that we're safe coming in and out. It is only 20 feet wide, you know, emergency vehicles if somebody does have to get in. That parking just seems odd to us. It just seems strange, because they're going to have to back out, and we're going to have to back out. So now you have all these people backing out. So those are our concerns, and if they can be addressed, then we fully support this project.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Mr. Chavarria, you have the opportunity to address any comments that were raised before we close the public hearing.
Absolutely. We completely concur with the necessity and the high importance of drainage. In fact, when 674 Corona was built, there were 960 linear feet of a storm drain that were constructed from the turnaround, where that round catch basin is at the end of the fire truck turnaround, all the way to the closest city storm drain. And that tremendous expense was incurred to ensure that we were intercepting all the water that was coming from uphill down onto Corona and diverted to a safe area. In addition to that, the gully was protected with riprap, and a subdrain system was done in such a way that it's been 20 years, and the site has performed really, really well. So as far as being concerned for drainage, absolutely. We are going to take every precaution that the drainage is correctly addressed. We have not just a geotechnical engineer, but a geologist, and in addition to that, we have a required peer review by the city consultant to ensure that we are keeping the geotechnical stability of the site in top condition. And the most important part to that equation is drainage. So we understood that in '98. We understand that today. So regarding the parking area, the location of the turnaround deprives 674 Corona of parking because it has to be kept open, it has to be painted in red, and there is no possibility of parking within the dimensions of that hammerhead type of turnaround. So therefore, the addition of parking spaces is going to improve the condition and ensure that a guest or somebody that may come is not parking in the red-marked areas. We do not see any difference from this driveway to any of the other driveways on the street. You know, people will back out of a driveway, but this parking is actually going to be an enhancement to the parking situation that is currently existing. Another comment that the owner had on the conditions of approval. Condition of approval number 21, if we refer back to Page 55 of the package, Condition 21 refers to the construction of the sidewalk that goes from the fire truck turnaround to the end of the property and the access of the walkway. It is the position of the owners of 674 Corona that providing that sidewalk is kind of unnecessary, and the reason for that is it does not align with the remaining of the sidewalk. As it is right now, a lot of people come in the afternoons to park into the turnaround to enjoy the view. Having the walkway in there would actually increase unnecessary pedestrian traffic. the walkway in there would actually increase unnecessary pedestrian traffic to that, to any other area where only the people from 650 should be able to go. So the applicant would want to respectfully request the removal of the requirement for the construction of the walkway. Also, condition number 19 establishes that, that the applicant shall remove the existing swinging arm gate adjacent to the fire truck turnaround. That gate was not installed by the applicant. That gate is, does not belong to him. And it has been represented in many other occasions by members of the engineering department that they will take that away. So he would like to respectfully ask the removal of that condition number 19. Other than that, just want to close it with a reassurance that drainage is a most important concern and our most important element for designing this site correctly.
Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead then and, actually, it looks like Commissioner Gordon has a question.
Sure. Well, first of all, thank you for your patience and waiting. I realize you guys got bumped, but, and we apologize for the delay. Thanks for hanging around.
You're welcome.
So have, have you guys, has the applicant had an opportunity to have a conversation with the owners at, what, 650? About the drainage issue and the, and the parking and the safety issues that she raised, that were raised? Has there been any conversations between the neighbors?
I personally have not, and I will have to defer that to Mr. Patel.
Okay. I would strongly encourage that, you know, after, after the meeting at any, as soon as possible moment. This isn't really a great forum for working that kind of stuff out. It's really good to do it face-to-face if that's all possible, since especially you're gonna be living in the same vicinity.
I agree.
I really, I encourage that.
Commissioner Campbell, you had a comment?
Oh yeah. Just before we entered into deliberations, it occurred to me, and I apologize, I didn't realize it beforehand, but just may have, I have a professional relationship with someone on the applicant ownership team on a different matter and a different part of town, totally unrelated. But just to avoid any appearance of impropriety, I think I'm gonna step away before deliberations start.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. I think we've still got a quorum here, so we will soldier on. Commissioner Cooper.
Yes, I have a question for you. Who owns the gate?
I'm sorry.
Who owns the gate?
I do not know.
Yeah, the yellow gate at the entrance to the improved property was a city gate. And when I tried to take it out, city engineering department told me not.
Okay. So you think it's a city gate?
It is a city gate, but I was gonna pull it out because it was kind of just stuck in the middle. He said, no, no, don't touch that. That's our gate.
Looks like we have a city gate there. I just have a little, to follow up with that, is that gate required at the end of the street? What's it serve?
It, it used to be there when the street ended at the point of the turnaround. So that was a prevention for people, there was a little train and an access up to the big property across the street.
Right.
It went to the old water tank.
Oh, there we go.
Is there still a trail there where people could?
No, there was, there was a little road to the water tank. That's a perfect answer there.
Okay. And that condition doesn't exist? So people couldn't drive their four-by-fours up there if they really wanted to? No, okay.
Not anymore, no.
Not that I was looking to drive any four-by-four up there. I just was asking that question.
Thank you. Commissioner Stegic.
As disclosed earlier, I had met with the developer Javier Chavaria and discussed roughly nine projects in the Pacific Bay Area. I do not remember whether this was on the list, but it likely was. My question is for the city attorney specifically. I know as a city, we repurchased three structures in the last 24 months from private owners. If this, if this hill would be subject to liquefaction and the whole thing fall down, do we have any liability there for approving this permit? Any potential liability at all? Say the whole hill collapses there. Because when I look at that, it looks like there's some movement in that hill to this day.
I have no reason at this point to think that the city would be liable.
City would have no liability, correct?
Excuse me?
We would have no liability.
At this point, I, I don't believe that the city would be liable in that circumstance.
One more question.
Sure. Commissioner Cooper, go ahead. What's the purpose of the sidewalk? What's the purpose of the sidewalk?
We did not propose it. That's one of the standard conditions that engineering has. Anytime that there is an improvement, you know, sidewalks are thrown in there. So we don't feel that is necessary.
Do your neighbors want the sidewalk?
Yes, well, because.
We just need access to get to the house. I mean, once we're all driving up and down that street, then what do you do if a kid walks down? He's gotta walk down the middle of the street. There's no child. It's common sense to that. We made remarks, we should have a road, now we're looking for the next works to upgrade the rest of it, so it's him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chavaria. I guess then that brings it, go ahead and close the public hearing, bring the matter back to the commission for deliberation. Gentlemen, Commissioner Stegic.
I've visited the site. I've taken a look at the project. The actual curbside impact, it looks like a very small structure. Someone taking a look at there originally would probably think that was one of the 1050 Lindemar Ranchers. And they hide it from the street quite well. But when I look at the actual diagrams from the back, suddenly it looks like a hotel and it's, it's, they hide that square footage well. Assuming they can work out the kinks with the adjacent homeowner, I would support this project.
I think I'm of a similar mind. I, I just wanna confirm that drainage was obviously a significant concern expressed by the neighbors. And certainly, it was a theme that was discussed kind of at length in the staff report. So I'm comfortable that the drainage issues have been addressed. I assume that staff is comfortable that the drainage issues have been addressed in an appropriate manner?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'm generally in support. I'm not in support, I think for some of the reasons articulated here, of eliminating any of the conditions of approval that have been included in the packet, notwithstanding the applicant's request, which I understand. I wouldn't support doing that. I would certainly be in support of a motion to approve the project though at this point. Anybody else? Commissioner Gordon?
I will make a motion. I also just wanna reiterate the importance of talking amongst each other. I really wanna encourage you guys to do that. It sounds like you guys, some communication would go a long way towards ironing stuff out of the get-go. Because you're right at the start of this whole big, long journey together. And you're gonna be living together for many, many years. So I really encourage it. On the heels of that, get off my soapbox and make a motion.
Page 35.
We're closed.
Do we wanna go ahead and reopen the public hearing? Or we just wanna move forward with our motion?
Forward.
We'll just take the motion.
All right. Move that Planning Commission finds the project is exempt from CEQA, approves site development permit PSD 81917, use permit UP 08517, and variance PV 51917 by adopting the resolution included as attachment B to the staff report, including conditions of approval on Exhibit A to the resolution, and incorporate all maps and testimony of the record by reference.
Let's motion. Do we have a second? Commissioner Cooper?
I'll start in a second.
Okay. We've got a motion. Second, go ahead and vote. Okay. Well, that is unanimously approved by all members present. All right. Thank you. Okay. Excellent. And Commissioner Campbell had recused himself from deliberation on that matter. He's rejoined us.
Thank you.
All right. So that takes us then to communications. We'll start with commission communications. Do we have any commission communications? Commissioner Stegic.
Yeah, I'm just curious what the status on the marijuana applications is.
Nothing new since the last meeting. We're still in that first phase where the police chief is doing the background checks. And I believe they are due to be completed by the ninth. So this, later this week.
Do we have a final date for the lottery or a method, whether drawing or picking numbers out of a wheel or what?
We don't have a specific day set, but I think the method was pretty low-tech. We were just gonna be transparent, invite people to attend, pick numbers out of a hat, perhaps have somebody from the marijuana industry actually do the picking of the numbers.
There was, there was an applicant, whose name escapes me, but I'd seen her, never met her before, seen her on TV the night before, maybe Karina something here. And she asked, she said she'd met with, Commissioner Campbell asked if we could reopen the, the distance area. Is there any provision for that or a city council? Haven't they already voted on that? And we would be out of the loop entirely now?
Right. So if I remember correctly, that request was also made of city council. And so far, there hasn't been any direction to amend any of the ordinances.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yeah, I just had a question in regards to the hotel. How come it hasn't taken off the ground, expansion of the holiday and?
I have a call-in to the owner. I haven't heard back from her as of yet. My understanding is that they ran into some design issues once they finally, once they actually got into the ground. And they, they may be having some issues with the contractor as well. But I'm, I'm looking to open lines of communication with them.
Find out what's going on. Okay, cool. Thank you.
All right. That's it for commission communications. Staff communications.
So I, I do wanna hear back from you guys on possible city council dates for the annual report. And so the three dates available coming up are March 26th, April 9th, or April 23rd.
April 9th and what was the third one?
April 23rd.
I can do the 9th.
April, April 9th, I believe. April 9th, is it right, Tina? Did you say April 9th?
Yes.
I don't have any problem with April 9th.
April 9th, April 23rd was the third one?
March 26th.
April 9th would work. April 9th.
April 9th, yeah.
Feel a wave building here.
I'm a maybe. It's a spring break there.
So I still need to confirm this with the city manager and that, the city council, but we'll, we'll shoot for April 9th. I just wanted to remind you all that due to the President's Day holiday, our next regular meeting is on Tuesday, the 20th of February. And also wanted to plug the sea level rise planning public workshop, which is next Tuesday, February 13th, here in the council chambers at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Well, it's, we've worked our way through this agenda, so I think that a motion to adjourn would be in order.
I have one further question. Are we past council committee?
No.
Will the planning department be allowed any input on the general plan update?
Sure. So last direction we received, which has been a, been a little while, we were asked to get more community feedback. And several different priority initiatives came up in the interim. And so we're looking to get some direction from city council at their next goal setting as to where that update should fall within our, the priorities of all the various initiatives we're working on.
You know, I said planning department. I meant planning commission. Will the planning commission get a chance to weigh in on the general plan update?
Oh, certainly. You're very important to that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gordon.
Move to adjourn.
Commissioner Cooper.
Okay.
Okay, motion second. Let's go ahead and vote. All right. That's unanimous. Thank you.